I'd like to call the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting to order at 6:05. I apologize for the delay. I'm going to make some introductions. My name is Holly Durlow-Babcock. I serve as the Chair of the Board this year. To my left is Tom Solon. He's our Vice Chair. Liz Brown is around the corner from him. She is a school board member. We have Tim Grison. He's our Principal. Welcome, Tim, as our new Principal of the Hollis Brookline High School.
Thank you.
And sitting next to him is Patrick West, our brand-new Principal of the Hollis Brookline Middle School. Going around, we have Krista Whalen, who is also on the School Board. Gina Berksoff, who I always say her name wrong, is our Assistant Superintendent in charge of Curriculum and Instruction. And to my right is Andy Corey, our Superintendent of Schools. I need to follow the agenda. I need an appointment of a process observer. Is there anyone willing to do that tonight? I should actually say I'm sorry. We have three members of the Board missing tonight due to it being July and having extended plans on that. It's Cindy Van Conant, Kate Stoll, and Beth Williams. So we will be serving you tonight, the four of us. I need a process observer.
I'll do it.
Tom, you good? Because you're going to be on my clock, too.
I can absorb.
You can do a process observing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Agenda adjustments. With the Board's permission, I would like to move one discussion item after public input, and that would be the DEI update and recommendation, which is informational only. But I believe we'll probably have some public input on that topic and thought it would make more sense to talk about it right after that. So is there any objection to that? So we're going to do public input, DEI update and recommendation, and then we're going to go to Principals and Athletic Reports. And then after that, we'll have our discussion items. So if there's interest in the draft reopening plan, that'll still stay in our discussion items. Okay, so let me make that change. Okay. And are there any other adjustments? No. Okay, so then nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
The Principal would kind of provide some of the Principal's information to the Alicia High, so they can touch upon those as they go through their process. Is that all? The process is completed, so everybody in their packets.
I'm sorry, I really can't understand.
It's hard to hear in this room. Is that better?
That is good.
Okay, great.
Mr. Corey needs some of the mic.
I couldn't hear you.
I know. You're not getting feedback? I'm getting feedback.
I was asking, do we do a nomination, resignations, and packet knowledge? Are you a Principal who reports and a Principal who reviews them, or can they do their reports? Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, at this point, we need to do some approval of minutes. The first set of minutes are from the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board meeting of June 16, 2021. I'm going to need a motion. The following amendments have been offered. Page 11, line 2, delete as it would go. Page 16, line 34, replace "of" with "or." Page 19, line 21, replace "languages" with "language." And page 21, line 2, replace "see" with "seem." Krista, you were absent, so you'll have to abstain. So I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon, and I need a second?
Second.
Second by Liz, so.
Just one comment. I don't recall the page. It's pretty deep, but there is a reference to "room" in Zoom as opposed to "room and Zoom." I don't know if anyone cares.
Okay, oh. So Don might note that there is an amendment to be made where "room" in Zoom should be changed to "room and Zoom." Okay. Okay, all in favor? Three, aye, and opposed, and abstentions. So that's the 3-0-1. Okay. And we have another set of minutes from the public hearing of June 16. So I don't have any amendments to that, so we need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
By Tom.
Second.
By Liz. All in favor? Three, and abstentions. Okay, 3-0-1. And then we have a non-public. Did we have a non-public? Yes, okay. So we have non-public minutes. I need to accept as presented.
Where are those minutes that were not in the packet?
I didn't see those minutes.
I remember the non-public, but I haven't seen the minutes.
Yeah, I'm trying to. So how about we don't make a motion to those? And we will put those on the next. Yeah, actually, there's no link either to them, so.
Oh, the link is linked to the Don meeting in September.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if that one happened.
Okay, all right.
I think I'd be.
So moving on from the minutes will be. What time is it?
6:10.
Okay. So I'm going to be opening the floor in a minute for public input. Before opening the floor for public input, I wanted to read our Public Participation at Board Meeting policy, which was amended in 2011, just so that you're clear on the rules. The primary purpose of the school board meeting is to conduct the business of the Board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. The Board encourages residents to attend board meetings so that they may become acquainted with the operation and programs of the schools. All official meetings of the Board shall be open to the press and public. However, the Board reserves the right to meet and to adjourn or recess a meeting at any time. The Board also reserves the right to enter a non-public session at any time in accordance with the provisions RSA 91-A colon 3. In order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the Board may be heard and at the same time it may conduct its meetings properly and efficiently, the Board adopts as policy the following procedures and rules pertaining to public participation at board meetings. The first 15 minutes, and we're going to talk a little bit about the number of minutes in a minute, will be set aside for citizens to address the Board. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the Board. Speakers must provide their name and address and will be allotted three minutes per person. Number two, consistent with RSA 91-A colon 3 and Policy BEDB and the laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights, the Board will not place any matter on the public agenda that is to be properly discussed in a non-public session. Complaints regarding individuals or employees, personnel, or students will be directed to the Student Superintendent in accordance with Policies KE and KEB. Number three, all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. The Board Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow this rule of order. Persons appearing before the Board are reminded that matters of the Board or without authority, members of the Board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Questions shall be directed to the Board Chair. Additionally, in our Policy BEDB, which I'm not going to read the whole thing, we reserve the right to limit public discussion at board meetings to agenda items only. We've practiced this for many years, asking that the public limit their comments to agenda items only. Tonight, we'll be extending the time set aside for public input, but before we do so, I wanted to ask, and I'm asking, and this is just a request, that if you're planning on speaking, that you stand now so that we can have a sense of how many people are planning on speaking. So what do you think, 45 minutes?
I cap 12.
So 45 minutes? Yeah, 50 minutes? Let's do 50.
We have one more.
Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't need it.
An hour. Should we do it?
Sure.
Extend it to an hour. Okay, thank you very much. We are going to ask that you stand up to, you know, come to the podium, but I wanted to get a sense. If you didn't stand, and I didn't take account, so, but please try to. We're going to do the honor system here. It's giving us a sense. So I'd like to make a motion to extend the public input to 60 minutes. Any second? Tom? All in favor? Any discussion on that?
I just, I just, I just want to ask. We've had a lot of input, a lot of very heartfelt and emotional input, but a lot of input already. We have received many emails directly and through other means. Repetition is understood, but it doesn't have a desired impact of greater importance. It has a tendency to numb us. So I just ask you to keep that in mind. We've, we've heard a lot, and we're going to hear a lot, and we appreciate the input, but please understand that at a certain point, we go into overload. Thank you.
This isn't, this isn't a town meeting like that, so we don't really recognize the point of.
So are you going to shut down free speech?
I'll answer your question, sir.
I understand your point. I believe that in a lot of these kinds of sessions, I'm a leader of Hollis, and Connecticut, and the issue. And the idea, because someone has already mentioned a concern of yours, doesn't mean you are allowed to express your concerns.
And I really appreciate that.
Repetition, by the way, sometimes helps. Remember what they said in Germany, "A lie to a bottom, so we know the truth." Don't shut down free speech.
Okay, thank you.
That was not my intent.
Well, I'm not so sure it was.
That's fine.
So at this point.
I disagree.
I'd like to.
If I'm going to disagree, let people speak.
Okay, sir, we, our plan is to let people speak, but we have, this is a public meeting, and we have.
This message is very clear. I'm sorry. There's a subtext to what you're saying.
There's a motion on the floor. I would like to speak to the motion.
Sure.
I'm going to vote in favor, but with the understanding that I hope we don't see any more animosity or outbursts. I want this meeting to be respectful, and we have already received many emails. Most of us spent last night listening to the Hollis meeting or attending the Hollis meeting. We are all very interested in opinions, but we are all private citizens who are giving their evening to this, and we would like to be home at a reasonable hour so we can go to work and make rational, reasonable, rested, educated decisions. So don't shake your finger at me, sir, because I do find that to be very offensive. So I hope that during the rest of this, that we can have a peaceful, educated discourse.
To respond, please. I've been under said, I know exactly how you feel. Why are you?
Point of order. This is not public input yet.
Okay, yeah. This is, we're not at the point of public input.
Your question, you have a message to respond right now. Is there meaning?
Yes, we're not responding at this point.
We made your point.
Let's move on. Can we take, the motion's on the floor. Can we take a vote?
I think we can move to a vote.
Yes. All in favor? Okay. 4-0. Okay, so we'll be extending the time for public input to 60 minutes. I just want to go on an overview of a few items, just a point of clarification. The Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board oversees the workings of the high school and the middle school. The elementary schools are in two other districts. The School Board's purview is limited to policy, curriculum planning, and budgeting. The policies of the School Board are available to the public on the SAU website. You need to go to the Hollis Cooperative School Board Policies section. That site, that database is maintained by the New Hampshire School Board Association, and the reason I say that is that sometimes the search function doesn't work, and I struggle with that. So if you can't search them, you have to browse through them. There are other documents available on that website, including our collective bargaining agreements, the Program of Studies for the High School, the student handbooks, which are in the process of being revised, budgets and budgeting information, and all of the agendas and minutes for the last two years are listed there, plus you can go to the archives. Our meetings are live streamed, and they, those live stream recordings are also available on the website. We have been reading many emails that we've received, and many of us have had a chance to watch last night's School Board meeting. We are listening to all of it, and we are processing all of it. As you may already know, public input isn't a time for question and answers. The Board doesn't respond, but we will be commenting on the diversity, equity, inclusion pieces in our packet and our reopening plan during the discussion portion of the agenda. And for your convenience, we moved the DEI conversation to after public input so that you'll be able to stay if that's what you're interested in hearing about. We encourage you to stay and hear our thoughts, hear our thoughts about that. We do limit comment to three minutes, and we do set a timer here, so we will be asking you to sit down after three minutes. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record, and all questions and comments should be directed to the Chair. So at this point, at 6:19 PM, I'm going to open the floor for public comment.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive.
Hi, Joe. You know what? I think that mic has the same problem that we're having. Just make sure you speak into it. Thank you.
Is that better? Can you guys hear me now?
That's better.
All right.
Can you guys hear me?
Bring it a little closer. So before I start my prepared comments, I just, I realize this isn't a back and forth, but I was at the Board meeting last month, and I sent in a proposal for a new policy, IB, which is the Academic Freedom Policy, and I just would like the Board during its deliberate or after public comment, if you could just give us an update on where we stand with that and what the process is. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Regarding the DEI resolution, the resolution actually includes valuable concepts like quality of opportunity and the importance of nondiscrimination. However, there are three significant problems with that document, and I think they have to be amended before the Board should even consider approving it. So I'll go through the three changes and what I recommend, changes I recommend that the Board makes to the document. First, the document seeks to promote group identity rather than individual responsibility and achievement. This focus on group identity rather than the student distorts the concept of justice. All students should receive equal access to the educational benefits of a Hollis education, regardless of their group associations, innate or otherwise. And that's not the way the document is written, and I think that needs to be changed. Placing a significance on group identity only serves to foster division in the community, and I want students to be taught to value themselves and their unique abilities and talents, not to focus on race and other traits. So with these things in mind, I specifically recommend striking the words, while group identity is important. And that's in the definition, I think it's in the definition of diversity.
It is.
So the second thing that I recommend that you change in that resolution is the document seeks to allocate educational resources based on need with no concern that each student reaches his or her full potential. Educational resources must be distributed equally to all students so that each child reaches their full potential. This thinking.
You have 30 seconds, Joe.
What's that?
30 seconds, Joe.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So this thinking behind decisions to, results in the elimination of AP programs and accelerated learning in other districts who have taken this concept and brought it forward as a priority. So I specifically recommend that the Board amend the resolution to change the words, get what they need, and replace that with have opportunities to reach their full potential.
Thank you.
And I'll come back because the agenda is very packed, as you know, with some super important things like the co-op agreement as well as the reopening plan. So I'll.
Thank you.
Wrap that up later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcia Donaldson, 38 Van Dyke Road, Hollis. I'd like to take a few moments and draw a mental picture for you. Two toddlers are on a city sidewalk about 20 feet apart. They are walking toward one another, and as they get closer, they realize who the other one is. And, arms flailing and little legs pumping and squealing with delight, they rush into each other's arms. Laughter, pure joy. One is white, and his name is Finnegan. The other is black, and his name is Maxwell. Finnegan's parents are a man and a woman. Maxwell's parents are two men. All six of them are best friends. If this thing rings a bell, you probably saw it on Facebook. The video was taken by Finnegan's dad. It was seen by millions of people. The heartfelt reaction to it crisscrossed the globe. Hardly a surprise. Two small children who loved one another. And I bet that many of us hope that their connection, their friendship, would remain in their hearts for the rest of their lives, no matter where they go. Uncomplicated kinship. Today, the proponents of social justice, or whatever term is in fashion, would and do take those two little boys and separate them into their proper affinity group. The key ingredient being the color of their skin. Maxwell would be in the ingredient, would be in the oppressed group. Finnegan would be placed in the oppressor group. They would be segregated, and that is where they're supposed to remain. So let's take a moment more and see what we have. What is now most important to those two boys, so they'll be told, is the color of their skin. Whatever they shared together as friends, who cares? And as for being educated, well, that went under the bus. I ask everyone here to take a moment and see what we have. What is now most important to those two boys, so they'll be told, is the color of their skin. What in heaven's name can be good about wrapping a shroud of lifelong victimhood around a black or brown youngster? What good can possibly grow from being told that you are a heartless oppressor?
You have 30 seconds.
And that goes for your grandfathers and grandmothers, too. No way out in either case. How incredibly cruel it is to tell people of color that they have no hope of being other than a victim. Isn't that another form of slavery? And yet, there are people who are eager to teach this. We slowly emerge from lockdown to discover this travesty of education spreading like a cancer. The bottom line is, we are witnessing attempts to see Marxism in our schools. It's evil, plain and simple. It has never made people happier, healthier, successful, or fulfilled. It appeals to the worst of people, certainly not the best.
Okay, Marcia.
It has no place for the individual. Call it whatever you want.
We've hit three minutes.
CRT, Abar, or the countless variations on the same theme.
Thank you.
That is not who we are.
Thank you. You've had three minutes. Thank you.
With your help, we can stop this and take our children to a far, far better future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The three-minute rule's in place so that everyone has a chance to speak.
Jeffrey James, 147 Rocky Pond Road. I'm the white parent of two of the small handful of black children who actually attend our school system. They started in kindergarten and are now a sophomore and a senior. So you can imagine, I have been very aware of how race is being taught in our schools. I have not seen anything even vaguely resembling the sort of accusations that get thrown around here. Nothing at all. No, at no time has any teacher in this school system said that white people are bad because they're white or anything like it. Believe me, I would have noticed. I would have heard about it. Now, if there's anything been missing about their education about this issue, it's been a frank discussion of systemic racism, which is actually the core, the core, of critical race theory. Now, listen, systematic racism is the exact opposite of what everyone is accusing, of accusing everyone white of being racist. It's the exact opposite. Systemic racism means that even when people try to be colorblind and are 100% well-meaning, they can unknowingly perpetuate systems, laws, customs, organizations, that lead to disparate outcomes. Where to put it bluntly, blacks get the short end of the stick. Example, blacks comprise 12% of the US population, but only 1% of the CEOs in the Fortune 500 are black. Again, blacks comprise 12% of the population, but blacks only own 4.2% of the wealth in the country. Blacks comprise 12% of the population, but the average US black is twice as likely to be fatally shot by police as the average white. Why the huge difference in outcomes? Well, there are really only two explanations. One, either systemic racism exists, which it does, or two, blacks are genetically inferior. And so here's the important part. If our schools don't teach about systemic racism when they discuss our economy and our society, they are leaving our students to draw the only other possible conclusion, which is that whites are smarter and more moral than blacks. Is this really what we want to teach our children? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Andrew Scott, Proctor Hill Road. I'm here to advocate for kids in the district who have experienced political discrimination due to an environment cultivated by certain politically biased teachers. I've gotten to know Mr. Corey over the past year due to my work with him on the DEI Committee. Wherever you fall on the political spectrum, I want this community to know that we have a superintendent who cares deeply about our kids. At the Hollis School Board meeting in May, he spoke about adults initially coming forward with the idea for DEI in our schools and how there was so much going on at the time with COVID and reopening schools that he put a low priority on the issue. But when students came forward and met with him and talked about their experiences, he elevated the issue to high priority, and we have had a healthy and at times vigorous debate and discussion in the community as a result. Part of our discussions on the DEI Committee revolved around political bias and in some cases, in some classes, political indoctrination and intolerance, particularly for conservative views. If you want to read about that discussion, it was posted on the SAU website under the Administration tab, Superintendent, DEI Committee Reports, and read the November 5, 2020 meeting minutes. At the co-op meeting, one speaker read anonymous testimonials from students at the high school describing political intolerance, indoctrination, bullying by fellow students, and an atmosphere of intimidation from some teachers. Recently, the testimonies of students, teachers, and parents were posted to the AboutHollis.com website. Click on the Testimonies tab to read what has been going on in our schools. After learning about these testimonies, I approached Mr. Corey appropriately. He said there wasn't much he could do about anonymous testimonies. Parents, teachers, and students needed to come and talk to him. He made that very clear. I told the people I knew who were associated with AboutHollis.com that unless they put names to the testimonials, they weren't going to have any impact on what was happening in the district. Mr. Corey promised confidentiality and even wrote me a note for students, promising that he wouldn't use their names, but he was very interested in hearing their stories. The same offer is open for parents and teachers who are hesitant or fearful to come forward with their stories. Mr. Corey can be trusted. I want the students to know that. He will keep your story confidential, but you must have courage, and you must come forward. Parents and some teachers started coming forward to affirm what is on the AboutHollis.com website, but the fear of these students was so strong that they still would not come forward. In our community Facebook pages, AboutHollis.com links and articles were censored and deleted. Left-leaning community members openly asserted the testimonies as fiction. The Hollis Brookline Journal Letters to the Editors had a community member write about AboutHollis.com that it was, quote, "full of misinformation and boilerplate conspiracy theories," buttressed by unattributed hearsay, those are the anonymous testimonies, and clearly intended to generate misplaced outrage over a nonexistent problem. This letter to the editor finally generated the motivation for students to come forward. Their lived experience is real.
That's three minutes.
Their fear is real.
Thank you so much. That's three minutes.
And their instances of being bullied for their beliefs are real. Mr. Corey, will you please affirm that you have met with some of these students and give their voice a name, without mentioning their names, but just confirm that you have heard their testimonies and that they wanted to put their names to it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Again, reminder, everyone, it's three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can, but.
Okay. My name is Ellen Cattelli, and I am a mom of five. My youngest will be a senior next year, and I had the privilege of teaching full-time this year as the long-term sub, the entire year for the art program in the Hollis Primary School. I have never spoken at one of these meetings in 20-some years of having kids here. This is my first time, and I'm nervous. But I needed to speak up because I witnessed and did sit in on meetings that were very controversial, happening at school during staff paid time, 1:30 to 2:00 PM every other Friday, which began on Election Day as part of our staff development and continued till the end of the school year. The topics were very controversial and divisive of nature. It was an optional meeting, but I wanted to learn, so I went as an educator and as a parent, and I didn't go to all of them because I was bombarded with a lot of work, and that was my first priority, of course, to teach and be ready for teaching art on a cart. So a couple of things that came up, a lot of controversial topics, but the one I'm here to talk about is the one that's kind of the one that's really filled a lot of division, I think, already in our community and our nation, and that is the CRT, or Critical Race Theory, that the NEA. that the NEA has already decided to go ahead with or endorse. I am here because these meetings did involve that. There were requests, or not requested, but encouraged readings. And this one article that was mentioned by the leader of this group that would meet every other week was, you know, pretty much highlighted as if we only had one article to read. And I did read it. It would be this one, and it's entitled "Student Intervention for Anti-Racist Education" by Life Legueros. And it's kind of an approach that some teachers are using in Vermont currently. And another book was called...
Thirty seconds.
Right, White Rage. I want to read just a couple of quotes from that article that I've highlighted. "Schools may be the only chance for intervening in a life course based on white supremacist beliefs and actions harmful to them and potentially ruinous or deadly to others. The stakes are high. Denial is the heartbeat of racism," to paraphrase Ibram X. Kendi, "so students will be learning about things that many of their home families haven't come to grip with."
That would be the end of your three minutes.
One last thing.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cattelli.
Intervention is to support anti-racist education is even more necessary than masks.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
Masks and literacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Shove. I'm an 18 Maple Knoll. My speech fits within three minutes. Please don't interrupt me. You'll throw my brain off.
Okay, so we won't tell you the 30 seconds.
I'm here to make sure that you see the big picture of what's happening in SAU 41. Frankly, you're losing students. According to the Liberal Conservative Index, which is based on recent voting in national elections, federal campaign contributions by local residents and consumer personality profiles, Hollis and Brookline are both towns that have a political majority that leans toward conservative. Everywhere I go, I meet more and more people that are taking their kids out of public schools because of the obvious liberal agenda. The more SAU 41 chooses to do professional development trainings like Abar and forces healthy children to wear masks, the more families will be removing their children. Homeschools, private schools, and micro-school movements are making a killing off every decision you make that pushes our families away. It's not just the masks or how conservative children are actively being oppressed by their instructors as a result of the Abar either. It's your brightest students that are being ignored because you don't have the infrastructure to support their pace. They're going to homeschool. It's the students who have disabilities and can only be helped as long as they fit within the parameters of your bureaucracy. They're going to homeschool. The families that don't want their kids to be taught that skin color changes how they should look at their friends, they're going to homeschool. And the families that don't want their kids to be taught that skin color changes how they should look at themselves, they're going to homeschool. And families whose lives have been ruined by the local loudmouth bullies that are the only ones allowed to share their opinion, they're going to homeschool or they're moving away. I've been told that the whole community feel has changed in the last few years. This used to be a safe place for everyone to enjoy life. But now one political party has taken control of the forums at which we can speak and shuts down or eviscerates anyone they disagree with. I know that's not you guys. I'm just saying this is the overall. I'm sure we all know this, but you, the school board, are elected by the people, again, majority conservative, to represent our desires within the schools that we pay for with our tax dollars. If you want to continue having student funding, I suggest that you do what it takes to keep those students on campus. The money leaves with the students. Bottom line, your decisions are affecting the district pocketbook and it's all on your shoulders. I trust that you're keeping this in mind as you vote each month. I appreciate that you're not allowing CRT-type curriculum into our classrooms yet. The next step is to keep my political, keep any political bias, any political bias. I don't care, out of professional development trainings and install live feed cameras in the classroom so parents can monitor our employees as they teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
I'm Mark Constancian, 99 Twist Lane. I've been a plastic and reconstructive surgeon in this region for 43 years. So my thinking is, of course, colored by my profession. All our four boys went to the Hollis schools all the way through. Two of my grandchildren do. I want to make a couple of points. One is that I think equity is not a practical concept. I can't produce equity in two patients. In other words, I can't give patient A and patient B the same outcome, even though it's me, because they're each different. And so I don't think you can produce equity among two children or in a class or in a school or in a neighborhood. I just think it's not possible. It's a well intentioned, but I don't think it will work. Secondly, I asked this last night, and I perhaps made it a rhetorical question, but I didn't intend to. Is there evidence that in a community with demographics like ours, that teaching critical race theory or diversity, equity, and inclusion improves the school system, decreases racism, improves cohesiveness, does good things for the children, makes them more patriotic, makes them get along better? I don't think there is, at least I haven't heard of it. I mean, I would ask for five years. I'd be happy to hear one year. So that makes this an experiment, which is necessarily bad. You may not know what it takes to do experiments on humans, but it's called an institutional review board approval, very strict, even if I do it on my own patients in my own office. And that's to guarantee that what I am going to do is, what I'm investigating has been shown to be effective and that what I'm going to do is safe, including giving surgeons, I was saying, suicide hotline in case they didn't like some of the questions they were being asked about. That makes it an experiment. If there's no evidence that this has worked, you couldn't get institutional review board approval from any university or from the NIH or from even the local hospitals. That's the degree of the problem. Therefore, we need to think about this as an experiment and do it carefully. For example, you select parameters that you hope will improve anti-racism, less depression, more cohesiveness, more patriotism, less bullying, whatever you want to measure. At the beginning and at a discrete point, like six months later, you measure it again. And if it's not better, you decide to stop it until more is known about this. Otherwise, I think we're opening ourselves to potential problems. You know, if we find that fighting or bullying or depression or God help us, some child commits suicide, the kinds of things that will fall on this community and that will fall on all of you for being involved in the decision are very troublesome. And I think we need to know more before we do this, but there's a way to do it carefully, and I would encourage you to do so.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Deb Lucier, and I live at 34 Love Lane. And I would actually like to thank Mr. Corey for his response to my email. My husband and I do not have children, but we believe that our teachers and administrators have a tremendous responsibility to create an educational environment that will promote excellence in each student. There's a strong relationship between taxpayers and our schools. That relationship, like any other relationship, must be built on trust. A teacher has the power to influence, teach, and indoctrinate a child. And not to be cliché, but teachers do touch our future. That carries a heavy responsibility as well as accountability. We must be able to trust that the material, that our teachers are being... That are... Sorry, I'm reading.
Go ahead.
We must be able to trust that the material they are teaching is in the child's best interest and our best interest. I do not agree with or trust the principles of CRT or whatever language you want to call it. I believe racism is taught, just as hatred is taught. We are not born racist. I believe that the language of CRT creates division, mistrust, and fuels hatred where there should be unity. We are a country of people that come from many nations around the world. I'm actually Polish. My family came here, both sides, from the late 1800s to escape Marxism and communism. And I know what it's like to be called the dumb Polak. I believe our cultures, customs, and religions may be different, but we are all equally human. No one is better than anyone else, and no one should be called an oppressor simply because of the color they were born with. This creates racism, which leads me to DEI. And I believe equity is a sneaky word. And I believe that instead of equity, it should be equality. All in all, we as taxpayers and parents need to pay attention to what our children's being taught. And thank you for your time, and thank you again for whoever did respond. Thank you, Mr. Corey.
Thank you. So I appreciate the applause, and I understand that that's your emotion, and I totally get it. But we're trying to limit this to an hour. So I'd like to actually hear everyone be able to speak. The more people we get to speak is important, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Quoting from our district DEI statement, quote...
I don't have your name again.
I'm sorry. Artis Wobelt on Van Dyke Road. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
"In envisioning the Hollis Brookline graduates of the future, it is the intention of the district to be explicit in the cultivation of a culture that values, respects, and encourages our students to engage in difficult conversations and that we promote where developmentally appropriate, the use of courageous conversations." When I first heard that term, I assumed it meant group discussions about race. I could imagine many different ways to approach it for most ages, using current events, history, literature, stories, art, sports. But why would these discussions be difficult or require courage? These are not new topics. Kids talk about this stuff all the time in their own ways. Seeing each other as special is inherent in children. If they note differences, it is things like old, pretty, cool, good ball player, smart. Not as a group. They don't pick buddies or friends or playmates either because of or despite race. Teaching kindness, understanding, and acceptance as in SEL or DEI is an ongoing effort in schools, homes, clubs, athletics. Now, that attitude is close to being called racist. In the old days, these conversations were generally about sex, behavior, death, loss of a job, uncomfortable for the kid. But the courage was really on the part of the adult. Now I understood. What is happening is that it is the adult who needs the courage to deliberately create discomfort for the child, specifically the white, straight, Christian male first. Expanded SEL, social emotional learning skills, are said to facilitate these conversations. As I researched with very few exceptions, it was clear that the point of these conversations was to courageously inform whites that they are racist, and the conversation part is persuading them to agree. Truly difficult topics, such as gender issues, are handled respectfully, gently, and in pride, but not whiteness, and it's an original indelible sin. Almost done. Frankly, I don't believe the co-op board would approve stigmatizing birth, but it's out there, even in SEL and gaining acceptance. I'm here to say, that conversation will not be held here. It is one conversation we will have the courage to reject.
Thank you.
Hi, John Cross, AP Lewis Drive in Brookline. I took some notes to use my time efficiently. I have two children, one graduated and one still in the high school. I support robust inclusion and nondiscrimination policies, so thank you for your work on those. I think we need theories to help us understand complex things. Our students, including my daughters, deserve to learn how to think critically and learn methods to understand complex issues. These are learned through examining different frameworks and point of views. I have a degree in physics. A lot of physics is based on theory. We've sort of reached the point of being able to prove a lot of these theories because of technical limitations in our experimentation capabilities. I don't think people would object to teaching physics in school, but like I said, a lot of physics right now, the contemporary modern physics, is theory. Social science is very difficult and abstract as it considers how humans think and what motivates human action. I was involved in dark matter research in college, which aims to understand what the majority of matter in our universe is made of, if you are aware. The matter that we all see and are made of is only about 5% of what's actually there. So that should give you a hint right there that everything we think we know, we maybe know 5% of what we are, right? Social science, to me, you put that aside, is even more complex because it takes into account how people act and think and what motivates them. To critically examine our realities and help improve ourselves and our society, we can't be afraid of theories that make us feel uncomfortable. I know many of you on the board, and I'm grateful we have your objective, fact, and fairness-based minds leading our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Hi, Fred Hubert, 68 Hideaway Lane, Hollis.
Good morning.
So I don't have a prepared statement, but I'll try to be brief. I don't know what emails you've seen or what other feedback you've heard, so maybe I'll be repetitive, but it is what it is. I think generally, we, the public, trust that the school board and the administration is doing what they should be doing. And I think for the most part, you are. I think you guys trust the staff for doing what they're supposed to be doing, and for the most part, they are. But there are exceptions. You've heard about exceptions. There are specific cases that have been pointed out. It's not a false narrative. It's real. We care about that stuff. Yeah, so losing my train of thought there. But I just wanted to make that point clear, right? As far as the reopening plan, I couldn't pull it up. I wanted to read it. But there was a specific section, again, I think it was well-intentioned, but there's one point where it says everyone's going to be three feet apart in all of the classrooms, but not in the cafeteria. And I don't really think that makes any sense just from a pragmatic thinker. Yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert.
Maria Hubert, 68 Hideaway Lane. I spoke this yesterday. I have a little more details. I was more impromptu last night, but I just wanted to be a little more concise. I'm on the mask topic, which I understand there's some parents concerned that we're not going to keep mask mandates in the fall. I also know that there's the option of the school mandating them at any time. On June 30, 2021, there was a study done, and it was published in JAMA, the Journal of the American Medical Association, which is the gold standard, really. The title of that was "Experimental Assessment of Carbon Dioxide Content in Inhaled Air with or without Face Masks in Healthy Children: A Randomized Clinical Trial." Two weeks later, it was retracted. I want to summarize the summary of that study, and then I want to read to you the remarks by the author on the retraction. So this is this is the summary of the results of the study. "Most of the complaints reported by children can be understood as consequences of elevated carbon dioxide levels in inhaled air. This is because of the dead space volume of the masks, which collects exhaled carbon dioxide quickly after a short time. This carbon dioxide mixes with fresh air and elevates the carbon dioxide content of inhaled air under the mask, and this was more pronounced in the study for younger children. This leads in turn to impairments attributable to hypercapnia. A recent review concluded that there was ample evidence for adverse effects of wearing such masks. We suggest that decision-makers weigh the hard evidence produced by these experimental measurements accordingly, which suggests that children should not be forced to wear face masks." The author of the study, Dr. Harold Wallach, his response to this retraction is... "The journal did neither respond to that except by saying our response was inadequate, without particularly telling us exactly what was inadequate. The journal said it had done an additional review. My request sent yesterday morning, my time had not been answered until yesterday, business closing time. I do not see that any of the comments of the journal has either invalidated our results nor have we left any of the queries unanswered. In the meantime, we have received several comments by atmospheric and chemical scientists who have measured the same amount of carbon dioxide under face masks as we did. My conclusion is this retraction is political, as the retraction statement says, because of public health implications." In our view, the public health implications would be that the wearing of face masks by children is carefully scrutinized, and anyone who does not agree with our data should produce better data refuting our findings. This is the normal way of scientific discourse. data refuting, refuting our findings." This is the normal way of scientific discourse and he says that this is the, we're in an autocratic society. That's the important point.
Thank you. Very much. Thank you. I, one second. I do ask that if you are planning on speaking, speaking, you rise so that I don't, I would like to get everyone to speak once before I get to secondary people, to people who are, nobody's secondary. I'm sorry about that. Like, everyone's important. I just mean the people who, who, like, right. Second round people. Sorry about that. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Jim Gill. I live at 30 Milton Place and I'm here before you this evening because I was driving through the center of town and I saw an About Hollis sign and I was intrigued by it. And then I went up on their website and started reading what they had to say and because I've been reading independently on my own, as we all have, you know, coming out of the pandemic for the last year and a half, the reign of terror that we've all gone through. And I have to say, I was most impressed with it. I don't know any of the people involved with it, but rigorous analysis, fair-minded, insightful to, I was, I became a rather quick convert and democracy is an enlightened citizenry and we've got a lot of enlightened citizens in this town. And so that's how I came to be speaking before you. The other thing I'd like to say is I, I volunteer for a couple of groups and lately I've been getting a little discouraged and exasperated because there's a lot of critics, but not too many helpers as far as helping out and so forth. So when I look at you folks, I immediately start to think you got families, you got responsibilities, you got debts, you got problems of all sorts, and here you are volunteering your time and your energy and effort because you love the kids in this town and Brookline and you want to provide the best quality education that you can for them. So I just want to thank you for your service right up front. And when it comes to COVID, as near as I can determine, one side claims to be following, being guided by the science. The only problem with that is when the founder of MRA, the innovator and creator of MRA technology, you know, starts expressing great concerns about its usage, he's physically threatened. When the, you know, director of the CDC, Robert Redfield, merely concludes as a, as an expert virologist and everything else, that he believes the virus came from the lab, which was a conspiracy theory for a year and a half, he's physically threatened. So I'm saying, why have the people being guided by science coming to this 27 other, I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. So I would say, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good when you come to making your decision on allowing these kids to get back because divorces, suicides, bankruptcies, everything else, while you're waiting for the science to guide you to a perfect god-like answer, never going to happen. We can see that already with just recent development. As far as CRT, Critical Race Theory.
Finish your thought quickly.
Aristotle said, "The mark of an educated mind is the ability to entertain an opposing thought without accepting it."
Thank you.
So when it comes to diversity and equity and inclusion, if you implement Critical Race Theory, the bottom line is one's whiteness is going to prevent them
Okay, you're three minutes.
from speaking and addressing and disagreeing.
Thank you.
So what you'd be a party to is not providing an education, but an indoctrination.
Three minutes are up, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
John Garuba, 30 Meadow Drive. I'd like to speak on two topics here tonight, all, both.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
Extremely important to myself and my family. So the first, I'd like to speak on the DEI resolution. As we've heard here today, everybody's trying to do the right thing, but sometimes things happen or are, are real concerns that weren't intentional. So I want to make sure the wording that we get in this resolution is as strong as it possibly can be because we can see that there's a lot of strong emotions on both sides and we want to make sure when people refer to this, it says what the community genuinely desires it to say, right? So I see several areas of concern. First with, it specifically seeks to group children by acknowledging that physical attributes are important, right? I believe this to be highly unwise. It's going to result in grouping of children into different identities and, and result of that is, is both teachers and students are going to be ascribing stereotyped characteristics to those identities, right? So, which will result to indiscrimination. We should have a policy that recognizes each individual as a student and an individual person, not necessarily their group identity, right? So ascribing group identities to, to children will have terrible impacts to regardless of which group they are assigned to, right? Sorry, I lost my train of thought on that.
Sorry.
All right. Second part is there's a, a picture in the resolution.
The packet, yeah.
And while the picture conveys a great concept, I believe that in the future, people may come back to this and, and point to this document for, or this resolution for how policies and procedures are made in the future. And there may be very many interpretations of a picture or a graphic. So I don't believe that belongs here for the importance and, and accuracy that needs to be in this document or this resolution. So for those reasons, I think that we should take some time and make sure that we make some adjustments to that wording so we are more crisp and clear. Secondly, I'd like to talk a little bit about mask mandates. So I have two children, adolescent girls in the district, and I've been following the, the science and the data from the beginning. I'm trained as a computer data science analyst and I've looked at the VAERS database and I've looked at the raw CDC and I've calculated the probability of viruses affecting me and my family from the beginning of this all the way through to now. And in the beginning, there was legitimate concern because there was not enough information and the information that was available would drive exceedingly high risk to people. But now that we've been in this pandemic for a while, you can continue to, to look at the data and I've looked at it for myself.
That's three minutes, John. Just one sentence.
Right. Please don't have a mask mandate. It's not just to enforce other people's risks and profiles. I wouldn't ask them to evaluate or change what they think and I don't think that they should be asking others to evaluate.
Thank you, John.
Jim Crittenden, 232 Worcester Road in Hollis.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Crittenden.
Okay.
Would you like me to spell it?
I would really like that for the, because the minutes are taken by the woman at home.
C-R-I-T-T-E-N-D-E-N.
Thank you.
All right.
And what was the road again?
Worcester Road.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very brief background. I'm not a lawyer, but I like to say I pretended to be one in front of the United States Patent Office for over 30 years. So the summer of the CRT front has been very exciting. I think we've got a new law in New Hampshire, our anti-CRT law. That can be then added to our anti-divisive law from, I mean, our anti, sorry, the anti-
Discrimination?
No, the 2010 law of anti-bullying. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And you can also add that to the federal laws, which are the equal protection rights, 14th Amendment of the Constitution, and the Civil Rights 1964 Act. So we've got a lot of ammunition for those of us that don't believe CRT should be in the classrooms. And then the other exciting thing that happens is we get a bunch of teachers in New Hampshire that go public saying they're willing to go to jail to, to do this. They want to do CRT so strongly, they're willing to go to jail. That's, that's pretty shocking. And then they get backed up, as someone mentioned earlier, by the teachers' union, the National Teachers' Union. They're promising to back them up. So you've got this group of people that are, this, this is a hill they're willing to die on figuratively because it's so important to them to do this to the children in these schools. It is just, it is shocking. It is wrong. It's morally wrong and it's legally wrong. We have these four laws. So I have a simple suggestion. I know you have lots of documents to write. You have to write all these policies. You have to revise them. You have all these things. I have one other suggestion for something you write, which is a memo to all the teachers inviting them to school this fall, whether they're new or whether they're returning. You might remind them, among all of the things that are expected of them, all the teaching responsibilities, everything, they're expected to obey the law. They are not expected to conduct themselves in a way that violates any of these laws that CRTs certainly would. So that's, that's my suggestion. The other thing I would say is I have not read the teachers' union contract.
Thirty seconds.
I don't know what is in it, but I guess I would be surprised if there was something specific in that that said teachers have to obey the law. I wouldn't expect to see that in there. But maybe there should be something in the next contract. So.
Thank you.
Those are my suggestions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melanie Labake. I live at 2 McDaniel's Drive in Brookline. First of all, I want to say thank you to the school board. I believe that you have done a really tough job and carried it through. You, you have tough decisions to make and I really appreciate what you've done, as well as our superintendent and our staff and our teachers. It seems like there is a national effort to undermine public schools and I think that we need to be aware of that. We need to listen to each other and understand how we can do things differently. I have no problem with that, but I, I am concerned about divisiveness. And I think of that saying, stronger together, you know, that, I, I do believe in that stronger together quote, but if you think about what the reverse is, it is weaker when we're divided. And in Hollis and Brookline, we have our, one of the top districts, we're number five in New Hampshire as far as districts go. We have a great school. My daughter graduated from these schools. She is very smart and I know many, many smart young people that graduated from this school. We, I heard talk about unity and I, I heard talk about justice. And I think that what we need to do is start talking to each other. I heard things that I'm not quite sure about and maybe we should have coffee and talk about this. But our community needs to work together. And I just came here to say that I support you and very much of our community does support you as well. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Whalen from Worcester Road and I'm going to kind of echo what Melanie just said, but it's been, for the people that tend to forget things in recent memory, it's been a hell of a year for you guys. And I can tell you, as a spouse of a school board member, I watched it closer than most folks saw it and it was absolute hell. You guys went through war together last year. Every week meetings, daily phone conversations, weekends in the office trying to sort through who's got COVID, who doesn't, who saw who, who didn't. But in that process, you set the example for the state of New Hampshire and probably for the rest of New England, one of the few schools that stayed open successfully without hurting our children and by giving the best possible chance of education in a completely unusual time that we'll never hopefully see again in our lifetimes. And I congratulate you. I wish you well in the future for it. And I hope that everything else that's being talked about tonight, most of which really has nothing to do with what you do in the school board or in the administration when it comes to actually educating children, preparing finances, running the business of the school district. I think those are things that you're going to focus on when we all leave the room after giving you our personal opinions. And you're going to do those very well, as always. So congratulations and I would like to concede at least five seconds of my time to a round of applause for your effort in the last year, including the teachers, the staff, the custodians, nurses, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Michelle St. John, 29 Orchard Drive in Hollis. And I, I just want to be brief. I do want to echo the thanks. I was at the Hollis School District Meeting last night. Everyone has done, from teachers to staff to school board to administrators, you all have been working really hard. I have two students who are current members of the co-op district. One is a rising junior, one is a rising freshman, and I've been continually impressed with their very different individuals and their very different needs. And I would like to echo the sentiments that you all are doing a fantastic job. The other point I wanted to bring up was this concept of anti-DEI, anti-CRT, whatever that really means to individuals. It was brought up as an amendment to the Warren District and almost a record attendance of individuals came and it was voted down, not once, but twice, twice by the residents and taxpayers of Hollis and Brookline. So I just wanted to keep that in mind. I'm impressed with the plan that has been moved forward, the policy. I know a lot of individuals representing many different perspectives, participated in working with Andy about for a whole, you know, six months. And so I just want to say, keep it up, okay? Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Gemma Wilder and I live at 48 Pierce Lane. I was born here and I was raised here. I went through all the schools and my husband and I moved back into town about six years ago and we have five children. I homeschooled them up until sixth grade when my oldest son went to school and I, and since then the older two did come back home last year because I was not happy with the restrictions. I want to remind everyone, if you don't know, that the CDC has COVID-19 as a 99.8% survival rate. And masks in children, if you have your own, know that they're not being worn correctly, especially in the high school and junior high because children thrive on connecting. They thrive on being able to build those relationships and it's stifling to them when you put those kind of roadblocks in their way. If, if you haven't been paying attention, depression and suicide rates and overdoses, drug use, alcohol use has gone up a lot. And I know personally from individuals that are struggling with their children or, you know, kids that I know personally, and it's going to stop. We've got to come back to some sort of normalcy. And with these new, the new wording that you're talking about putting in right now, it's only going to divide our children more. And I, I have grown up, I have seen bullying in Hollis from, you know, back in the eighties and it happened and it wasn't right, but it's actually worse now with social media and different things going on. And you're trying to add in and paint people as monsters because of the color of their skin or their religion or their political views. That is what's happening right now. And I found out last night the way to go about, you know, the right channels to talk to you guys more. So you'll be hearing a lot more from me because this is only my second school board meeting I've ever gone to, besides when I was a child and I'm planning on coming to a lot more. So I really hope that you consider what, what's going to happen to them in a year, in five years, in 10 years, if we don't start really showing them how to love each other and showing them what really matters. And that's their education and how to be the best individual they can be. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Viskubenko.
Need to move the microphone closer to you.
Anna Viskubenko, 213 Depot Road.
Okay.
V Y S K.
If you could just write it after you speak.
Yes.
If you could write it down.
I appreciate it.
And give it to me, that would be great.
I will do that. Thank you. Same time. So firstly, I would like again, oh, closer.
Yeah, just hard to, is that?
Oh, nice. So thank you to the school board and the school- So thank you to the school board and the school administration again for keeping the school open. This definitely saved sanity of my daughter, emerging sophomore, and my own. That said, I would leave the decision on wearing or not wearing masks, feeling or not feeling the daily COVID forms to school administration, because it proved itself to be very well taking care of your students, our kids, and your staff, our teachers. So I again appreciate your hard work. Secondly, I would like to express my concern about the focus on group identity versus focus on the individual in the D E I language. All the students should be given equal opportunity to learn and reach maximum of their potential. So I'm also concerned about the language focusing on equity instead of equality. Also, I would like to second our first speaker and request the information on the processing of the revision of the school, the proposed political neutrality, no indoctrination revision to the school teacher academic freedom policy. I think this is a very important document and important revision, because we have the great teachers in this school, and the teachers have a very significant influence on their students. So I would like to see this influence used to teach the subjects of the approved academic program, rather than distributing somebody's political views. Students should learn to become a responsible citizen, so that they should be taught to think critically and to think for themselves. That said, I would like to see the A B A R program removed from our schools. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just leave your name for me at some point. Thank you. Thank you.
Mark Tigert, T I G E R T, Tiger with a T at the end, 199 Dow Road.
Thank you.
Ditto what the previous speaker said. I'm not going to belabor the point she made. Try not to get too emotional here. The meeting last night, there was an individual who referred to those that disagreed with her point of view as extremists. I think she was just misinformed, perhaps didn't have quite the level of the amount of information she needed to make the, use the proper term. If you want to know about extremism, I can tell you about extremism. I lost seven friends 20 years ago on 9/11. Okay? I belong to a demographic that has a higher per capita of advanced degrees and even bachelor's degrees. That is, I'm a veteran. I spent over 30 years in the Navy, a large portion of that in intelligence. I also served in submarines. Nobody told us that because that person is this or that person is that, that we need to acknowledge white privilege, that we need to acknowledge our differences and how we have oppressed, or our great grandfathers, our ancestors have oppressed someone. If anyone in here feels oppressed or offended, please come talk to me after this. I'll be happy to talk to you about oppression. Not here, but in other places, the former Soviet Union, where I've lived, where I've talked to people that lived under the boot heel of communism. And yes, CRT is based in Marxist theory. Those that scoff, I'll, I can debate them on the side as well. I have a master's degree. I speak five languages. Language is important. Language is the worldview of that culture. So when you're in intelligence, it behooves you to learn the language of the culture you're studying. Ergo, changing the language that our people need to use. I hope I can use the term "our people." When I say "our people," I mean Americans. In the Navy, we had dark blue sailors and light blue sailors.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
Thank you. We had dark green Marines and light green Marines, okay? My brothers that I served with in Afghanistan, we didn't see each other by skin color. It was whether or not you could do the job, whether you could trust the person next to you with your life.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Andrew, just one second.
Yes.
These are the last two speakers. Okay.
Okay. Andrew Scott, I just wanted to finish my statement.
Sure.
From earlier, and just reiterate some key points as well. I'm going to backtrack a little bit and just say that Mr. Corey can be trusted. I'm saying this to the community, particularly to the students, parents or teachers who are fearful of coming forward and speaking about incidents that are happening in the schools. He can be trusted. He will keep your story confidential, but you, you have to have courage to come forward. Do you mind if I give them your email address?
No, not at all.
Okay. So Mr. Corey's email address is andrew, A N D R E W dot Corey, C O R E Y, at S A U four one dot O R G. And you can email him directly, and he will be happy to meet with you either via Zoom or in person. Parents and some teachers have started coming forward to affirm what is on the abouthollis.com website, but the fear of these students was still, at that time, so strong that they would not come forward. In our community Facebook pages, abouthollis.com links and articles were censored and deleted. Left-leaning community members openly asserted the testimonies as fiction. The Hollis Brookline Journal Letters to the Editor had a community member write that abouthollis.com was, quote, "full of misinformation and boilerplate conspiracy theories buttressed by unattributed hearsay and clearly intended to generate misplaced outrage over nonexistent problems." That is, that is the letter that finally generated motivation for the students to come forward. Their lived experience is real. Their fear is real, and instances of being bullied for their political beliefs in the school is real, right? In the, in the, in the high school in particular. Several have now spoken directly with Mr. Corey, as he has affirmed from my last statement, and two of them asked me to attend the Zoom call. Their stories would make anyone in this room or listening online numb if your child had gone through what these students have gone through. They affirmed what was on the abouthollis.com website, wanted to put their names to the testimonies, but Mr. Corey asked them not to do that based on experience, he is, experiences he has had with students making statements in public and the toxic responses from some adults. That is directly from Mr. Corey to those students. So they will remain anonymous. Mr. Corey already gave.
You have 30 seconds, Andrew.
Okay. He gave voice to those students that he had met with them. I'm sure he will meet with others in the future. And I just also wanted to momentarily thank you as a board, particularly for the co-op meeting and what you all did. I don't know all the processes, but I heard that you could have kind of squashed some of the debate before it even got there. You didn't. I thank you for allowing this conversation to go on, only in America can something like this happen. So thank you.
Give it to Scott.
So before I start my comments, Andrew took my thunder a little bit in thanking you for allowing us to speak. Everybody got a chance, so I appreciate that. I did want to actually thank everybody who came up here to the microphone and shared their thoughts with you, because public speaking is difficult, and this is an important issue. So I'll just wrap up my comments here on the school reopening plan. Tests are an essential part of learning. They serve two important roles in an education setting. First, they're a motivating factor for students to internalize the material they're learning, and they provide a reason to study and a method of tracking one's progress. Second, they ensure that instructors are covering the material in the curriculum. Without department finals, there's no way to be sure that instructors have addressed the prescribed curriculum. As we know, remote learning is not conducive to fair testing, and for this reason, remote learning must not continue in 2022. I'm asking that the school board specifically identify course comprehensive testing to be restored, and this should be stated clearly in the 2022 reopening plan. Another remnant of fear that uncertainty produced back in 2020 is assigned seating and contact tracing. School is not only about academics, it's also about a student's development and interaction with their peers. It's hard for students to transition to a new school and to meet new friends when you're actively reducing their circle, their circle socials, social circles. Thank you. It's a terrible imposition on their development. It's not surprising that policies such as this has resulted in dramatically higher teen suicide rates nationally. Knowing what we have learned in 2021, that COVID-19 does not meaningfully affect children, it would be abusive for the school to continue this policy. I'm asking that restrictions for contact tracing and assigned seatings be explicitly removed from the reopening plan. Lockers, both my son and daughter had to suffer through school last year carrying their backpacks, and I kid you not when I say I had a hard time lifting them out of the car to get them home. So to not have lockers when you're in school is unreasonable in this situation, specifically since we know that COVID-19 is an airborne.
30 seconds, Joe.
Concern. So I can't finish all of the problems that I have with the reopening plan, but I do want to say that the concept of having a special meeting to adjust the Articles of Agreement for the co-op in the fall is an exceedingly bad idea, because that meeting would likely not be well attended, and that would allow special interests to have more influence than they otherwise would. So I'm asking, whatever you're doing with the co-op agreement, I don't quite understand it, and we can get into those details separately. Please don't have a special meeting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We are going to close public input at 7:26. We've been a little over an hour, but we managed to get everybody's comments, so I appreciate all of your comments. At this point, we're going to move on to our agenda, which is the.
Can I just say something?
Up, I have.
Before everybody walks out of the room, if, if you're interested, it's, it's my expectation that there will be relevant discussion, directly relevant to the things you commented on. And one of the challenges that this board has is disseminating information for people who are not at the meetings. It's, it's very difficult in these times to address your concerns directly. You've taken the time to come here and express yourself. I think it would be beneficial to us and to you if you had the opportunity to observe the discussions that your input stimulate. Thank you.
I have a question. Now that you've done with the podium, is there a possibility it can be moved so that everyone can see everyone?
Yes, that's fine. You can move the podium.
Do you want to present?
Yes, that's no problem.
We want to disconnect the mic first, so we don't have to.
No, it's fine. It's fine. Great. So we moved our agenda to reflect the interest of what I expected to be a lot of comments about critical race theory and diversity, equity, inclusion. So we are expecting an update on diversity, the diversity, equity, and inclusion group that was run by Mr. Corey. And so I'm going to turn the mic over to him and have him give us the update, and then we will have an opportunity as board members to comment.
Thank you very much. First of all, this is the first opportunity for the co-op board to review the statement, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that was intentional, because there was a amendment brought, a Warren article brought forth in March, and they felt it was very important. And then the reality of COVID and everything else that came up, it just had really impacted grade seven to 12 slightly greater. So their board meetings have been prioritized slightly different than the elementary districts of Hollis and Brookline. A brief history of how we arrived here. The S A U board was approached for your public input during a Zoom meeting regarding a resolution related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I recommended no action at that time, as our focus was on preparing for school opening in COVID. I just couldn't place it as a top priority, because I felt getting the kids back to face-to-face learning as much as possible was the critical element for us last year. Then the co-op administration and board received a communication from students regarding their concerns related to issues they had experienced. My job is to represent students. When I realized what students were saying, I informed the three boards that I would be forming a superintendence committee. The reason I did a superintendence committee was because I didn't want to take attention from our school boards away from COVID. We were meeting on almost weekly basis, making decisions about opening and closing and masks and everything that went on. So that's why it was a superintendence committee. Part of it was also to increase my knowledge regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. We held a series of meetings. All that information is published on the S A U website, and the committee provided me with a statement regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion that is before you tonight. The statement that is before you tonight has been to the Hollis Board on two occasions, the Brookline Board once, and tonight is the first opportunity for the co-op. Last night, as many of you know, if you were in attendance, there was some very powerful and appreciated input to go back and look at certain pieces of the statement. Obviously, today I did not have the time to do that. I wanted to go through tonight's meeting, see what else we heard, and then my recommendation probably to the board tonight will be to kind of take it back to the committee, or take it back to my office and start to do some further work on that. Just a little bit about the statement itself. We started off basically saying that we wanted an inclusive community, and then we felt it was very important to cite the Senate Bill 263, which is kind of one of the reasons for this coming forward. But we felt that the law was only a benchmark, and that we needed to create an environment for all students in the Hollis Brookline community. My group had representatives from a variety of different viewpoints. The meetings were not easy. They weren't always fun, but everybody was heard. I think what I would say is, by the time we were ending our task of creating this first statement, that we had grown greatly to respect each other, and I think that was one of the best outcomes that we had. So near the beginning of the document, we wanted to make sure that we affirm freedom of speech, logic, reason, debate, and civil discourse, and aim to graduate young adults who value those qualities and seek to be known for the content of their character. Because we felt that the content of somebody's character is a critical element that we want from our graduates and our students. In the diversity definition, we included political perspective, because during much of our discussion, I was made aware of what I refer to as potentially unintended bias that comes out in some classes. And that's not our goal. We want to give a balanced portrayal when we're teaching. So that's why, that is why that political perspective was included. We talked about ability and disability, because we want to create programs and services to help those who need help, which what we're talking about there is we have wonderful special ed programs to address students' needs and to develop them to their fullest potential. But at the same time, we want to allow those with special ability to stretch, grow, and be challenged. So I have no intention of ending AP classes, advanced classes, or specialized clubs and things like that. That is not my intent at all. I think we have a very robust AP program. I think it's one of the hallmarks, and I can tell you, in my seven years with this board, they have always valued our AP classes, and many times will choose to run an AP class in an enrollment of seven or eight students, because that's the right thing to do for students, when typically we try to have a class size of somewhere at 13 to 15. We, you know, talk a lot about group identity, but we affirm the centrality of the individual student who is ultimately responsible for his or her own thoughts and actions. So we really, as much as we value the group, we, as a district, are always trying to focus on personalizing education, what's right for that student. So if you go to a guidance counselor, your discussion with that counselor, for me, is going to be different for Gina, for Krista, for anybody, because we really want to personalize the things that we do. In terms of the, the equity, there was a lot of debate between equality and equity, and I understand the concerns around those words, and we can absolutely go back to look at that. And what we wanted to make sure that we put out there was, we seek to provide equality of opportunity, not outcomes. And what I've said about that is, I'm a former track coach, and I look at this and And what I've said about that is I'm a former track coach, and I look at this in some ways from the sports view. So I want everybody at the starting line of the hundred yard dash to have everything they need. You know, I want them to have good coaching. I want them to have the equipment they need, the uniforms they need, everything to be successful. I want them to have the training they need, you know, the weight room facilities, everything that gives them the ability to run the best race. But I also recognize when that gun goes off, the winner is probably going to be the fastest person. And that's the reality of the race. In education, whether we like it or not, it's very, very competitive, and we're in a very, very competitive district. Our kids in the seventh and eighth grade are already thinking about colleges they want to go to, careers they want to have, and are already planning their courses and everything that goes along with it. One of the reasons we decided to address our social emotional learning a few years ago, well, there were two reasons. One, unfortunately, we had a tragedy. And whenever you lose a student, I've been in education for 38 years, I can still give you the names of five students that I've lost during that time. And as you can hear, it's very emotional. It's critical to me that we support those students. So at times, we've had to talk to some of our best and brightest about balance. I, like many adults and probably some people in the audience, have to work on balance between job and home. And that's a skill I think we need to continue to teach our children, not trying to take away from their goals and objectives, but just trying to make them understand that in life, sometimes what we think are priorities, we grow up and we mature, and those things What we felt it was very, very important to put definitions. So I know not everybody agrees with the wording or the definitions, but we didn't feel we could come with a document and not tell you what the words meant. Now, I've heard a lot of very good input. I've sat here, I took notes, it's recorded, I can go back and listen to it again, and I probably will be looking to amend this document and probably bring it back again. I've said it countless times, I have no intention of bringing CRT to the schools. That is absolutely, positively the truth. I sometimes struggle with the definition of CRT because it sometimes seems to be a moving target. And that's why it's important that we define that as well. So I'm going to work with some of the people that were on my committee, that represent some of the viewpoints that you share, and ask them to assist me on that. Because when you want to stop something, you should have a good example of what it is. We also have new legislation that was just passed. My administrative team will be getting training in that from legal counsel because part of our responsibility is to also protect the district. We need to be doing what is legally correct. So we will be going through that training on August 16th and 17th. We call it an administrative retreat. Sometimes people think retreats are glamorous, that you're heading off to some wonderful place. We're going to go right down the hallway to the middle school library. We're going to go there selfishly because it has air conditioning. We're going to order Panera, and we're going to have box lunches delivered. So it's going to be a great two days for us.
Swanky.
Yeah.
Very swanky.
Yeah, very swanky. For those of you who don't know, I think the board would tell you I'm probably considered frugal. So I don't necessarily and don't intend and want the community to understand, a lot of this work, we did. I didn't go out and get consultants. I think sometimes if people live within 100 miles of a location, they're not considered an expert. You know, a lot of times people feel you have to go far away. I can tell you that the people who served on this committee gave their time, approached it for the right reasons, and have come up with a good framework. To think that this is done, this is a document and it's over, it's the same way I view a strategic plan. It should be a living document changing to meet the needs of the community and the people. So what I'm recommending, and these all fall basically under the purview of the board, and they're not pieces that I think will happen quickly, but over time. Number one is that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative Policy Committee conduct a review of our existing policies related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We actually had this done on an informal basis by a member of our community who happened to, in his previous life, was a lawyer. And he looked at our documents and thought they were outstanding and really complimented us, but I want to have that done by the person who's probably going to have to stand in front of the judge. The second is that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District maintains its time-tested curriculum while examining how we deliver instruction while not making changes to what we teach. A lot of what people have brought up to the microphone and concerns and have talked to me is how we deliver instruction. And you have to understand, education is a craft. It's a craft that you learn as you go further into it. And when you start your career, me included, teaching some lessons and concepts is very, very difficult because you haven't built your toolkit and your skill set. So we need to continue to grow to do that. One thing I will make you aware of, we have been waiting approximately two years now for the state of New Hampshire to update social studies curriculum. So we are expecting a change, and I tell you that because I don't want you to think it's a response to what's going on. This is something that has been in process with the state for over two years. With everything that has gone on, I'm not surprised we haven't received it, but we're hoping it would probably arrive this fall. We put money in the budget to start examining it if we do get the new curriculum from the state. That the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board makes diversity, equity, and inclusion a strategic priority that is reviewed on an ongoing basis. I say that because basically I operate off a strategic plan. That's how I plan my budget. You know, I budget the plan rather than just go with needs. We have five-year plans for pretty much everything we do, from capital improvements, you might have noticed when you walked in tonight. We have a new hallway going in, flooring tile. That's a result because it's on the capital improvements plan. So there's no surprises to the board unless, like at home, something breaks unexpectedly. That we continue our programs and services to help those who need assistance while allowing those with special ability to stretch, grow, and be challenged at an appropriate level. So when I look at our elementary programs, we have a fabulous accelerated math program. We don't intend to dismantle that. I'll move away from that. At the high school, we have our AP courses, which we intend to continue. Those are just two examples of some of the acceleration we offer our students. That we promote where developmentally appropriate use of courageous conversations to teach our students to feel comfortable in expressing themselves now or in the future. I brought this up. Joe was kind enough to email me. Like many terms nowadays, courageous conversations have multiple meanings. My intent of courageous conversations was very similar to what we did last night and what we did tonight, for people to come out and have a respectful debate, share their concerns, share their thoughts, and move us forward. I think that's a skill we need to teach our children because having three children myself, I see them being too dependent on their two thumbs and not being able to show up and stand at a podium, which is not easy, and express themselves. So my examples of courageous conversations are what happened tonight, and I would also use the Co-op Annual Meeting, where people spent nine hours, and then approximately 400 people on the 15th article got up and voted on an amendment, and then they voted on a resolution. To me, the outcome of that wasn't as important as the process that it went through to arrive at that vote. And lastly, that we investigate a program called Choose Love and determine if it should be expanded in the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District. Choose Love is a program we brought in a number of years back after we lost, unfortunately lost a student, to focus in on social emotional learning. Choose Love is promoted and endorsed by the state of New Hampshire and our governor. It is a very appropriate program. They have recently expanded their program to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I want to review that program to see if we, as a district or as an SAU, should expand that. I look at that because we have a number of things on our teachers' plates, and going out and getting a brand-new program would be like giving you a dessert plate and sending you up to the buffet. You can't do that to teachers. We can't intentionally overload them. So by adding to a program they already know, they already use, they already implement in a very positive fashion, I believe that we can start to increase this. It's not going to be done for this September. We're probably going to do our research, and if we make a choice to move forward with Choose Love, we'll probably use our November Professional Development Day where we as a SAU bring in that speaker. If we bring in Choose Love, they have a component for parents at night, for community members. We would absolutely be willing to support that type of forum at night so parents could learn about the program. So that's my update to the board. Those are my recommendations. I did not ask for any action to be taken. One of the things that I have worked hard over my seven years here is I don't tend to bring things forward and want an action because I do want community input. So that's why this has been read on a number of occasions at a number of boards because not everybody's schedule allows them to be here tonight. I'm using the same process we use typically with policy, even though this is not a policy. For policy, we give three public readings so that everybody should be aware of what's going on. As I, this is on what I would, I have said to people who have asked, on a slow train, it's moving steadily forward. We had multiple meetings this year with those students who wrote to us last summer, and we learned an awful lot. And that, to me, will always be the most important voice. I respect the taxpayers, but those students counted me to be their advocate and to bring things to this board. So they are my top priority and will continue to be, and that's why this became an issue when approximately 25 students who had been with us pretty much their whole careers expressed concerns. And I'll gladly take any questions from the board.
So as Andy said, there's no action required tonight, but this is an opportunity for us to discuss the diversity, equity, and inclusion statement, but also, I would say, open it up to any kind of comments you'd like to make based on what we've heard tonight. I think it's important for the public to have a sense of where we all are on these topics. So I'm going to open it up to the board and have you all start. Somebody who's going to start with it? Do you want me to start? I don't have to be in. I'll go first. So first of all, thank you all for your input. I have written down some ideas because it's just easier for me, and I want to be brief and quick. The Co-op does not have critical race theory as part of its curriculum. As a matter of fact, we've not made any curricular changes in the past 18 months. Since March of 2020, the focus of this district has been on providing full-time in-person and/or remote synchronized instruction to our students during a global pandemic. This has meant teacher training on the best utilization of Google classrooms, online services, tools to make rooming and zooming more productive. We simply have not had time for a full curriculum review or overhaul. However, we do continue to teach the facts of history and the social systems that impact our society, including economic systems, cultural systems, government systems. Topics about gender, race, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, disabilities, religious differences do come up in any study of history and the social sciences. We also encourage our students to read and to find joy in the reading of fiction, and we've encouraged our staff to have age-appropriate conversations, discourse, and debate on controversial topics. We have not asked our staff to focus all of their discussions on topics of race. In a classroom of adolescents, topics organically come up, and our staff of educators have been trained and continue to be trained on how to manage and moderate a classroom full of differing opinions and ideas. And we want our students to share ideas, to ask questions, to think critically, and to support their ideas with facts and with strong primary sources. This past year, the SAU has encouraged our staff to seek out professional development on a whole bunch of things, but we have asked them to focus on social and emotional learning, specifically because we have all been seeing reports on how the pandemic is impacting the mental health of our students. And I just want to say, the pandemic has impacted all of us in such a horrible way, and we're all so angry and frustrated. Our kids are angry and frustrated. Our community is angry and frustrated, and it's that anger that's driving us apart instead of bringing us together. This is, it doesn't matter your view of the virus. It doesn't matter your view of masks or no masks, vaccines or no vaccines or any of it. What matters is that we're all together in this, and it stinks. And it stinks for you, and it stinks for us, and it certainly has been horrible for our administration and for our students. And we are very aware of that, and we are trying to do the best we can to make our kids have at least some sort of a great, decent experience. I tell my kids all the time, we are trying to make the best of it, even though it hasn't been very easy. So we've actually asked our staff to take training on social and emotional learning. And in many ways, I wish I was a mental health professional. I wish that schools did not have to deal with mental health issues. We've had lots of conversations on this board as to whether or not it belongs in schools. But see, the thing is, our students are with us seven hours a day, and some are anxious, and some are depressed, and some are overwhelmed, and our staff, whether they're teachers or custodians, paras, they need to be prepared on how to help them. Just for your information, the professional development approval process is outlined in the collective bargaining agreement, and our staff can either receive PD, professional development, from a program that the SAU sets up, like Mr. Corey was suggesting, a Choose Love program, or they can seek classes on their own. These classes need to meet the requirements of their professional development plan and their certification. There's a two-step approval plan. The building principal looks at what they are taking, and as does the assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum and instruction in her team. The board has appointees who signed off on our manifesto as well, and so there's a whole circle that gets completed and that we can see what's happening. But we will always encourage our staff to learn as much as they can to help them create safe, open, welcoming classrooms for our students. With the new language from the New Hampshire State Budget HB2, we've reached out to the district attorney for guidance on how to continue to encourage discussions in a classroom while staying true to the law, and we expect to hear more on that in the next few months. I personally want all of our students to know that their opinions and ideas are respected, their conservative opinion and ideas, their liberal opinions and ideas, all of them need to be respected. But if something goes wrong, there's a process that needs to be followed, and that process is laid out in policy KE, Public Complaints. And basically, it's to follow the chain of command. The student or parent needs to go to the teacher first. If the problem is not resolved with the teacher, they then head to the building administrator, and then to the superintendent, the SAU office, and then finally to the board. And Andy referenced, and I want to make sure people understand, that last year, when a group of students put their names on an email, which they sent to the board and the superintendent, which spelt out their own experiences with discrimination, the superintendent redirected them to their building principal. He said, "You need to follow the process." And that principal worked with them over a year to review their list of complaints. And some of those complaints were true firsthand experiences of discrimination and oppression that they had felt. Some of those experiences were hearsay, things that they had heard about happening. Some of those things have been things that have been investigated and resolved, but investigations often have to stay confidential. And the students had a great learning experience figuring out which one of those things could be acted on, could make a difference. And finally, I have been seeing a quote from Martin Luther King, and I just wanted to give the full sentence of his comment about color and character. He said, and I quote the exact sentence, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character." It's a beautiful dream. It was his dream, and some of the people tonight believe that that has been realized, but many others disagree. And that's the question. Are we there yet? That's the type of question that I hope our students will still be able to debate and discuss as we move forward. And so I'm probably going to support all your resolution needs. There's my comments. Anyone else? Mr. Solon?
Thank you. I'm not going to be as eloquent. I also want to thank...
I also want to thank the members of the community who came up to speak. And whether it was because of or in spite of my remark, I appreciate the fact that I heard some very thoughtful and new input tonight. I'm this month starting my 17th year as an SAU 41 board member. Fifteen it's my 15th year on the Co-op Board. I don't know whether I should be given congratulations or condolences or just be booted. But either way, in those 16 years, there was never a mention of CRT while I've been on the board. It's not part of the curriculum. I didn't I had never heard the term until my young adult children told me about a Facebook discussion going on, and they had to explain it to me, and I've since tried to come up to speed. But the fact that there are overlapping topics that are discussed in the classroom, they overlap with critical race theory, it's not evidence that CRT is being taught. Teaching someone that voting exists and teaching about how the election process works is not the same as instructing them how to vote. There are existing federal laws, state laws, we have we have district policies, they're well-publicized. None of them that we have had brought to our attention instruct the teachers to use CRT practices in the classroom more have we made a conscious attempt to put anything in our curriculum. That there are soundbites being taken out of context. I think I think sometimes it's teachers seeking to better understand a topic that leads them to investigate these these issues. There are phrases used, but that's not evidence that it's being taught. In our classes, students learn about many alcoholisms, capitalism, socialism, Catholicism, Judaism, Buddhism, atheism, plagiarism, sexism, racism, there are lots of them. Teaching about a topic is not advocacy or indoctrination. It's education. Ignorance and avoidance is not helpful to our children. And now, thanks to all this misinformation and controversy about CRT in our community, it's a topic of interest in our schools. We can't shut it down. It has come into our schools as a topic of discussion, and ignoring the fact that it's being brought up and questioned, avoidance is is not the solution. But discussing and teaching about CRT is not the same as teaching CRT. Just like discussing topics like racism and slavery, genocide, liberal and conservatism, or any hotter sensitive topic, it's not instructing or encouraging the students to adopt the practices. In many cases, it's just the opposite. There's a quote that's been used and abused, that those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. Keeping our kids ignorant is not the goal of our school district. It's also not the goal to make education passive or without challenges or without discomfort. Being called on in class, being told to go up on the board and do a math problems, solving difficult problems put before us, resolving conflict, just plain speaking up or self-advocacy, these are all uncomfortable situations for for many students, for many people. Growth growth can be uncomfortable. So the kids come to school with pre-existing opinions and beliefs. Some may originate from their family or discussion with their friends, or they may evolve from personal experience or studies they've taken on their own. If expressed, they may be challenged. Isn't that the point of critical thinking that's so highly valued is is the ability to challenge assumptions or challenge questions that are brought before us? There's a difference between a challenge and an attack, but to the challenged, the difference may not be obvious, and that's a big a big thing. I'm an engineer by training, and I thought it was my duty at a presentation to ask the questions that what might go wrong. I mean, they they spend all their time talking about how the project was going to go right. So I would sit there, and I I would say, what about this, and what happens to that? And afterwards, I had been doing this for I wasn't a brand-new engineer. I'd been doing this for more than a decade. My supervisor came up to me and said, you know, they don't want you to come to their meetings anymore. I said, why? He says, because you killed their project before they start. And that's that's how I learned that you got to you can bring up the challenges, but you have to acknowledge the potential at the at the same time. We want our teachers to challenge our students. Classmates will also challenge one another. They'll challenge the teachers, and we have to allow that to take place, but within limits. And sometimes the limits are exceeded. It's not ideal, but we're hopeful it's not frequent, and then when it does happen, people learn from it, and it's not repeated. Schools should be a safe place to push limits, to get uncomfortable, but we know we can get better. Teachers are human. They think, they feel, they have opinions. Our policy, IB, asks that if a teacher is sharing a personal opinion, that the total presentation is essentially balanced and fair. Now, I haven't heard directly from the students, but I've heard from many parents that they believe that some teachers are not succeeding at achieving that balance. We have members of of the community accusing teachers of a wide range of, I'll call them transgressions. And as Superintendent Corey alluded to, they have conversations with teachers when they are aware of them to deal with those things, but they are done confidentially, and and we hope they are done productively in a way that that teacher becomes a better teacher. The teachers are required to, believe it or not, abide by the law, and and when they don't, and it's acknowledged, there are consequences to that. But and I want to I want to reiterate what Mr. Scott said. We have to know about it, and I say we collectively, the school, not necessarily the board, but it has we have to know about specifics in order to address specifics. We can't take action on hearsay. And for that reason, the process that Holly described is really what needs to take place. If a parent or a student believes that a teacher is not being balanced in their presentation of a topic, they need to make it known, but first to the teacher, because it it may just be an issue that the teacher in enthusiasm, maybe they're taking a devil's advocate position to to challenge a student and inadvertently are being viewed as as dictating something. Teachers have incredible authority. They have incredible power, power of persuasion, power of influence, and they have the power that even if a student disagrees, they may not feel comfortable opposing or contradicting that teacher for fear of retribution in something as simple as poor grading. So despite best efforts, there may be times when the limit is is crossed, the line is crossed. But we can't fix it if we don't know about it. And if we can get anything out of this process, it's to provide a better channel of communication so that that self-correcting loop, again, I don't mean to sound like engineer, but that that closed loop can occur the way it's intended to. It's not our intent to create a school of indoctrination. It's not. And I don't believe, for the most part, it's the intent of the teachers to indoctrinate. I won't say categorically it doesn't happen because anything is possible. People are people. But what we need to do is learn when it's when something objectionable is occurring, clarify what's really occurring, and take steps to fix it. And those steps may be training. Those steps may be working with students or parents to help them understand the value or context of the situation, where it may involve some type of disciplinary action. Anything's possible, but we can't deal with it unless we know about it in a factual basis. I've got more thoughts, but I'm going to shut up now and let some of my colleagues talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. That's pretty elegant, actually. Okay. You two can fight it out.
She's bigger than I am. You want to go? You win. You go, girl.
Go ahead, Krista.
I also want to thank everyone for attending our meetings, for writing the letters to us. I've learned a lot. You know, it's it was interesting. We would receive some letters, and I'd say, oh, my gosh, why do people think that? I mean, because some of the letters that we got really made this assumption that we are we're teaching CRT. We are trying to make the white children in our district feel that they're they are oppressors, and they are making and they just receive that because they're white and that we're trying to teach them to hate their country. And and I was stunned by that because I can't imagine what would be the purpose in doing that. First, we live in the most amazing country in the world, and we are so, so very fortunate to live here. And just having this discussion right here and having people write us letters and tell us they're unhappy with us, or they're mad at us, or they are happy with us, are good things, and and we learn from that. We all learn from that. Even when you get a letter that you completely disagree with, your first instinct sometimes is to go, oh, my gosh, where is that coming from? But then you sit it sits in your brain, and you look at it and you analyze it because you want to understand where everyone's coming from. And I can promise you, I've been on the board for 10 years, not as long as Tom, but the people that I work with here, my colleagues and our administration, they truly want what's best for our children and certainly for our country. I mean, I it sounds very patriotic, but I feel very strongly about that because I am so proud to live in a country where we continue to make progresses and changes, and we look back on our history and go, ooh, maybe that wasn't great. We need to move forward. That's a re that's that takes skill, that takes intelligence, that takes fortitude, and that takes guts. And I think that's what we're all trying to do. So I'm glad that Andy is discussing putting the definition of CRT in anything that we're looking at, because I think that's part of the confusion, is that we're all thinking and talking about different things. As Andy said, it keeps moving. It's a moving target. But I can promise you, as I understand CRT, we are not teaching CRT, teaching the white children. We work really hard in this district and on this board and this administration to make sure that all children thrive, and that's the thing we have in common. Everything I read was a concern for children, whether it be, you know, saying, don't teach CRT, if it was saying, you know, we need to teach in another direction. The concern was for our kids and for educating them and for helping them stay healthy and helping them thrive. And that is what we do. I mean, educating is the most important thing, and knowledge is power. The more information we can give our students, the better equipped they are to go in the world and make decisions and make a brighter future for our country, which I certainly hope they will. And we do a good job. I mean, just I say we, I mean, everyone, because parents, our community, it does truly take a village. It is not just one group of individuals. We have 86% of our children going on to higher education, whether that be a junior college or a four-year institution. We have 6.2 going into trades and careers. We have 2.3 going into the military, which is a little bit above the national average, which is 2%. And it depends on the year, but we always have quite a number, a strong number of students. I think one year we had close to 5% going in to the military. So we truly try to encourage that path as well. And as you could hear, people are moving back after they are educated here, and they leave, and they come back to get an education and to live in our community because it's an amazing community to live in. I've lived here 22 years, and I enjoy every single minute of it, even when we're having these difficult discussions, even when we have a nine-hour meeting. That's that's democracy. That's everyone talking and hearing what everyone has to say. And I do appreciate people having the courage to get up and speak in front of your neighbors, in front of your friends. It's not easy. I I know that, just speaking up here. So I just want to reassure everyone, we're all on the same page. We're all trying to accomplish, I believe, the same goal, and we would never have curriculum that would make any student feel that they are a bad person because of the color of their skin. I totally agree. Every student should have an opportunity to feel safe in our schools, to feel encouraged to learn, and to move forward to become happy, thriving citizens of our country.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you. Liz, up to you. Round us out.
I didn't come with any sort of prepared statement. I'm sure you're all thankful for that, or maybe not. I I think I want to start with the definition of critical race theory, and I think the problem is that no one really around here has a clear definition, and what I think it means is not what you think it means. And the first time I encountered it was in the early 1990s when I was in law school and being taught property class by a professor whose last job was being at the ACLU. And I learned a lot about critical race theory in that class. I didn't learn a lot about property law, but I can guarantee you what our kids are learning in their schools is is not critical race theory. And you can't confuse critical race theory with trying to teach kids culturally relevant education and culturally diverse literature. And so you can't just use that as a buzz phrase and try to make everything that is happening in the school that is a conversation about race, social economics, gender, gender identity, all of these things somehow a negative buzz term. It's kind of the first point I want to make. The second point I want to make is, I think a couple of other folks at this table have made it, but it's it's a really the need for courageous conversations. And I think if anything, we as parents and you as community members who are concerned about what's being taught in the schools, need to have courageous conversations at your dinner table. And then you need to teach your children how to have courageous conversations at school, courageous conversations with you about what's happening at school, and courageous conversations with their teachers about how they're interpreting the conversations that are happening in I don't think there's a handful in this room right now that actually know me. We could have a political tornado at my house on any given day. We have the full spectrum of ideas represented at our dinner table, especially when my oldest boyfriend, Tennessee, is home. My kids have come home with different stories about things that have that they have heard in school, and we've had to have courageous conversations at the dinner table and courageous conversations with those teachers. So when I get a little frustrated, actually, you can tell from my voice, I'm more than a little frustrated at reading about the About Hollis website, I'm really frustrated with seeing allegations, hearsay, and no identity put on those conversations. If something happens and it's bad enough that you need to report it to somebody outside of your household, you need to follow the protocol because we don't have administrators that can be in every classroom. And the very notion that somebody suggested earlier that we should put a camera in every class so that we can videotape every teacher's conversations and coursework every single day is outrageous. It violates FERPA. day is outrageous. It violates FERPA. You know, we can't, we can't do that. We cannot be broadcasting other children to parents and other adults. It can't be done, nor is that what we want to happen. Because I don't want to be videotaped every moment of my job, nor should we want our teachers to be. We want them to have some ability to speak in the classroom and to be able to have conversations with the students in the classroom and be able to, especially at the high school level, develop critical thinking skills and have conversations. But these critical conversations have to start at home. And if you've got fundamental beliefs that you want to make sure your children learn, make sure that those are instilled at home. And they're going to come to school with those ideas and they're going to feel confident enough to have those courageous conversations in the classroom. And I think the more kids are exposed to other kids speaking out and expressing their political opinion, they're going to feel more emboldened to do the same thing. And it's difficult, I think, for sometimes there's some of these younger students as they enter the high school as freshmen to be as bold as they need to be about their opinions. I want to just specifically look at the resolution because I don't think anybody else has. The, and now my computer froze. Perfect timing. The, the first...
Would you like the paper copy? Because you know I always have that.
Yeah, actually, if you can just, the first, the first... Thank you. After, you mean, having it open all night and now I can't see it? It's so, the resolution is two things. It's therefore may it be resolved that. And number one says, the SAU school districts will make diversity, equity, and inclusion a strategic priority by actively supporting such efforts. So... Probably obvious at some point during this conversation, I lean fairly conservative in my political views and I find that statement not to be what I send my kids to school for. So I rewrote that sentence, what I would like to be sort of the number one front and center, what I think the school is here for. So I want to say something to the effect that the SAU will make critical thinking, data, research, intellectual curiosity, respect for diverse opinions and ideas, respect and compassion for others and their ideas and thoughts a strategic priority by actively supporting such efforts. We can tweak that later, but I want to make learning, critical thinking skills, teaching our kids how to write, express opinions about these issues, number one. If we teach our kids how to think, research, and write, I don't care what profession they choose to go into, whether they choose to go to law school, medical school, or they decide to be the mechanic down the street, or a plumber, they will excel because critical thinking skills are what we need to teach our kids. So I think we can teach those critical thinking skills, those research, writing, all of those things as our number one priority in line with being able to be respectful of others and their differences. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Liz. Okay. So I think I'd like to move on because it's 8:19 and I think...
I have a procedural question about this.
What? A procedural question is fine.
Regarding this, the document stuff.
I can't hear you, Tom.
Is there a...
Louder, Tom.
Huh?
I can't hear you. No one can hear you.
We're all going deaf. It's a sockel room.
Is there a presumption that we are ultimately going to adopt some resolution? Because I have an ongoing objection to that process. And if there isn't support for actually adopting a resolution, I'm, I think that what you're trying to achieve through this, your work in this resolution, is worthy of support, but not this process of creating a resolution. If the board is not in support of actually formally adopting a resolution, do you want to continue working on it?
I look at the resolution as a document for myself, my administration, and to guide teachers. I don't necessarily need the board to formally adopt something, but I think it's important that the board understands the perspective that I would come at this issue with and the community understands that. But I would be more concerned about the board ultimately agreeing with the recommendations.
So the six points?
The six points, Tom, and not all in one loop. Those could be six different meetings at six different times. And as Liz said, she would change one of them already. But those, to me, are more important because that's going to set up the strategic plan for multiple years. The resolution, to me, is kind of taking everything I learned and putting it in one document. So when people ask me, kind of, how do you arrive at these resolutions? This is, this is my document. So I don't think that I need Hollis, Book Line, or the Co-op to adopt the document, but I do think it's important that everybody understand my thought process and how I arrived at those recommendations. And I totally see us doing what Liz just did in prioritizing them differently, stating them differently. But I think my goal was to give you the gist of where I was heading. And the problem keeps, my road keeps getting distracted by other things.
Really? I can't imagine with what.
So, you know, I'm really comfortable where we are and I think really in the fall, we can do some quality work. And when I bring forth hopefully soon...
I understand what you're saying and I appreciate that. The other, the other concern I have is that when we were doing the instructional practices committees, we, I think unrelated to this, used the same three words, diversity, equity, and...
I actually think we used something else. It was, it was inclusion and equity, but there was another word. I don't, it wasn't first.
Okay, because one of the things that, that we dealt there was the idea, not of these intrinsic things of race and whatever the categories, we were looking at making sure that we prioritize the individual students' needs and interests and that our academics and our, and our recognition is open to all interests and, and career paths and things like that. And I don't want that to get pushed aside by the focus on, on these elements.
No, I think that's a great point. And I think as we head into what I'll call the strategic plan, that's when we, to me, we need to have those tough conversations to meld them, prioritize them, decide what are goals, what are priorities, what are objectives. So I don't see this as a separate piece. I see us in one committee having really focused on what I'll call the academic side and this kind of more on the social emotional side. And those need to come together. So I would agree with you and it's not going to be easy work, but I think when we finish this in a couple of years, we're going to be a lot better for that child who's sitting in kindergarten, first grade, second grade.
Thank you.
And so I think the point too that you just made is that it's a slow, slow process.
Yes.
And we're taking our time. Great. So at this point, we're going to move on to the principal and athletic reports. First of all, gentlemen, thank you very much for sitting and, you know, I think that will really inform your time here as you are both new to our district, well, not new to our district, but new to your roles in the district. One of you is new to the district. So you two can fight over who is going to go first.
I'll go first. So first off, I just want to highlight a couple components of my board report. First off, the transition from the middle school up to the high school has gone smoothly thus far. Starting in the early spring, I was able to take part in a variety of different planning committees, including building the master schedule, participating in a number of hiring processes that took place for teach positions. I've been meeting with department chairs and teachers, counselors, secretaries, maintenance staff in the recent weeks. The school is open and certainly abuzz with, with activity. We have our E S Y and this year we implemented a summer academy for students who were identified as needing some, some intervention and supports to return to school after the pandemic. So that's gone off very well so far. The gym is open with summer camps. We have a basketball camp up there this week and the weight room is open as well with, we have some strength and conditioning offerings for, for our student athletes. We had our high school robotics team, which was highlighted in Principal Wes's report. Our high school robotics team hosted a camp down here at the middle school for students interested in the STEM field. Last year, the, the remote learning environment for some of the clubs like robotics was tough down at the lower levels, so that's very exciting to see back up and running. Generally speaking, my, my transition has gone so far back up to the high school. I do want to highlight, as Superintendent Corey mentioned earlier, some of our hires. We hired in math, we hired a gentleman, Lance Flamino. Lance is coming to us from a local convale school district where he has taught math and served as a department chair. He is, he has a bachelor's from Keene State in math and is completing his M E D in educational leadership. We hired two individuals in English, Jordan Brown. Ms. Brown has attended U N H where she just earned a bachelor's and a master's in secondary education. She most recently completed her student teaching at South Hegan and a long-term subposition in Boe. Comes with very high recommendations. Kate Moat is our second teacher coming on board in English. And Kate most recently served as a English and theater teacher in Founder's Academy in Manchester. In P E, we had two hires. We did fill the .6 position. A gentleman named Cole Bushman will be filling our .6 position. Cole comes to us from actually higher ed. He's currently working as an athletic trainer and a professor of P E at New England College. And we hired a teacher, Nicole Fortuna, who is coming to us from, she served a long-term subposition in the Nashville School District. And she just graduated with her master's of physical education, sports pedagogy from Manhattanville College. We also hired a school counselor, Emily Thompson. She attended, Ms. Thompson attended U N H where she earned a bachelor in human development and family studies and most recently earned her M E D in school counseling from RIV. Ms. Thompson was employed at Easter Seals and most recently served as a school counselor intern at Bedford High School. Special ed case manager, Ms. Bethany Beck. Ms. Bethany Beck attended Miami University, earned a bachelor's in elementary education, and went on to earn a master's in special ed from Grand Canyon University. And she is joining us from an out-of-state district, Lakota School District in Ohio, where she was most recently a science teacher. And she comes with wealth of knowledge and background in a variety of different experience, educational experiences in the classroom as well as a special educator. And while I do have some highlights to mention with regards to student handbook updates, I certainly welcome any questions or comments on, oh, one more hire. I did want to mention, after this went to print, we did confirm the hiring of Ms. Kimberly Meyer for our assistant principal of student services position. And Ms. Meyer has just come on board this week. So that is, yeah. So that is very exciting. It's very exciting news. So questions or comments are certainly welcome on any, any topics in the, in the report.
Were there any, any retirements, corresponding retirements that took place during the period as well?
I don't think any that you weren't already made aware of. I believe it was in June. Retirement.
He's asking if there's been any retirement since like...
No, no.
Not since the June, right?
Okay. So the, the summer academy, that's basically something new this year?
Yeah.
That's been instituted to help students fill the gaps that we noticed in individual students from, you know, from going from sophomore to junior year or whatever, so...
Correct. Actually, Principal Wes will identify the program at the middle school, but seven, 12, we do across the Co-op are offering interventions in both math and English. And at the high school, we do have the, the credit bearing system.
Okay.
So part of that summer academy does include additional components.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. And great job.
Thank you.
Everything looks good. Sounds like it's going well.
It is. It's going very well. So I'm going to just highlight...
Does anyone else have questions for Tim? I'm sorry.
No, great.
Okay. So now you're going to go into student handbook.
I'm going to go into the student handbook edits and just highlight the, the changes. I did provide the full copy of the handbook for your reference, but the, the other attachment there is essentially the old language and then immediately following that old language, what's, what's been added or edited. So the Daily Bell schedule, which will be not last year's schedule, but the schedule that was prior, was added to the handbook. It wasn't in there prior for some reason. And we also added the, the Co-op calendar to our, to our student, student parent handbook. The second note here, the electronic communication guidelines. What we identified here was the need for something in the handbook for, to address a potential remote environment. While there is no plan for any room in Zoom, that platform does exist and the expectation that it, it won't happen, even though it's not in any plan, the potential does exist for that situation to arise, whether it's, you know, students working on a group project or a teacher meeting with a student remotely for, for various reasons. So we wanted to have some language for, to, to identify expectations for students in that, in that environment. So if you look at the old, what was called social media regulations, essentially we took the same language from that and adopted it as what we call electronic communication guidelines, so a little bit broader scope and the same language, the same exact language as far as the transparency, accessibility, and professional. Those still all apply. That's all the same. If you flip to page two, you'll see what was added, the right smack dab in the middle of the page when meeting in a remote environment for any reason. These were the expectations that we set forth for students this past school year when working in a remote environment. And really, the expectations do fall in line with, with our expectations from students in a, in a physical classroom. We just added some remote components just to make sure that everything was clearly identified for, for both students and parents. The next section there, the Latin honors, this is in line with policy I K C, which was just recently, January, I think it was adopted.
It was like a month, so four years.
Yeah. I think final, I think the final last reading was in, I think in January. So the old language around valedictorian, salutatorian, top 10 has been replaced both in the handbook here as well as the, the program of studies. So the, the language matches with regards to the designations for the Latin honors. And I don't need to read to you what is in here, but it's all in line with what's in the policy. The updated classroom celebration language, this is guidance from our wellness, our wellness policy, our wellness committee. And it's, it's specifically around the approach to bringing outside foods into the, into the school when there's celebrations, having non-edible approach for birthday parties and the like. If there are curriculum-related food items, there's a process in getting those things approved. It doesn't apply to pizza at board meetings, though. So healthy snack guidelines and the like are all, all following there. There are policies in here that I just did want to highlight because it directly relates to the student handbook and they're currently, as we all know, under review. So while the student handbook is a document that has to be published at this time for students to register for school in, in August, there will be some edits to those that will fall in line with J L F, which is reporting child abuse, and then J I C D, which is student discipline and due process. So both, both of those policies need updating before we can, before we can etch in stone everything that's in the handbook. So there will be some edits that go into the handbook this year, but it will be pending these policy reviews.
So in terms of that process, so we don't, this is a procedural handbook that you revise and it's great that you... And it's great that you're bringing this to us so that we're aware of the revisions. But in terms of just when I sign it with my kid, the, we might not have some of those policies in.
Yeah, and they're noted as pending. The current language that's in there is what has been in there in years past because the policy hasn't changed yet. We haven't changed our procedures. So they're still in line with what's current policy. And it does note pending changes. And when those things happen, we will notify parents and the community that the policy, and then the procedures have changed.
Well, you know, policy committee needs to get it done.
I can, we'll get right on that.
Does this keep us from selling candy bars at the theater performance?
The.
The new wellness language, the food language, can we still sell food at basketball games and?
I believe that's outside of the school day, so that's, different rules apply.
And we can still have our candy bowl at.
Candy bowl still is, okay.
It's just not, which is not clear.
It's not clear that it's not in the school.
It just says curriculum-related items in school. And all of our other policies would apply at a school event, a theater event or the basketball game or whatever. We don't let them curse or carry guns or fill in the blank. So I think we probably ought to be, sorry, we probably ought to be specific that after-school activities are not necessarily going to have to follow the school nutrition guidelines.
There's actually exemptions in the law. So like you can actually have so many different events and everything. So it is in the law, which I believe is referenced as, not as basis for the policy. But you know, it was the driving force behind us developing a policy was the law.
And I think this is specific to the classroom.
I hope you're right.
It says it's allowed.
You're gonna be the one who's gonna be enforcing it.
Well, celebrations and food in the classroom, and this is a district-wide, this is.
It's the next, food is allowed for an event that is tied to the curriculum.
And certain school-wide events. Okay, but maybe we need, what if it's not school-wide?
Yeah, I would, how about we drop a comma and, I don't, extracurricular events? Or something to that effect. I don't know, you wordsmith it after you add a T and make, fix the grammar check problem.
So the policy actually states, I was just scrolling to find another area, but where did it go?
Yeah.
The section was specific to school items during the school day, like the heading. So it did specify during the school day versus at a boarding day.
No, but I don't think the handbook.
The policy does?
Yeah, the policy does.
All right, well, then make the handbook agree. And then I'll be happy, happy.
You can fix that, Tim, right?
Here's an old policy that maybe was.
Got it.
You can update us at the policy meeting the next, but yeah, so yeah, that would be a good change. Thank you, Liz, for noting that detail. That's awesome.
And Tim, when it says food is allowed.
Well, the one handed here, it was, it handed out. It just didn't make a difference.
I saw it today, yeah, after.
So Patrick, hope you're paying attention because this is how it goes here.
So I'll beat you up, but I'll also defend you to the death.
I didn't hear what you said, but it sounded like it was funny. Okay. So you'll just fix that, right, Tim? And then we're good and we can move on to. No, the second, yeah, but.
It's the under, curriculum-related food items in school that's broader and I just wanna make sure.
It's curriculum-related food items because like at a basketball game, it's not really curriculum food items.
Yeah, but the whole, it's, maybe it's the bad heading then.
I don't know.
It says food is allowed at an event that is tied to the curriculum and certain school-wide events.
So here's the thing, Tim. We want to be able to sell food at basketball games.
Yeah, and I.
Junk food that sells, not like apples and.
And it can't be healthy fruits and nuts, okay?
Understood.
We gotta make some money.
You can have healthy food, but we, if I'm going to a basketball game, I need to be able to ask for M&Ms. And that's pretty much.
We have to be, have to show that you're over eighteen to buy the shot.
Okay, so that's the deal, so just make sure that the handbook says that.
You got it.
Great, awesome.
Make a lot of money that way for some of those.
No, it's important, that's important, like Snack Shack and, yeah, no, I get it.
Honestly, it's the only way I can get my son to go to Getarnines. If I promise him he can have a soda and a candy bar at the brick.
Okay, so thank you, Tim. I think you can make that happen, I'm sure. So Patrick, your turn, welcome.
Sure. So I had the opportunity to observe end of the year celebrations at HBMS thanks to the videos posted by Tim, Yolanda and Mark. Prior to my official arrival at the middle school, I was able to be a part of the hiring process for four of our new hires, which I think you guys are all aware of, the computer science, Spanish, grade eight science and nurse, which I felt was really beneficial. During my first few weeks at the co-op, I attended the first day of a three-day administrative retreat where I met all the administrators in Hollis, Brookline and the co-op. I've been working with Tim, Yolanda, Jen Campbell, Mark Meskel, Ben Aria and Joanne Lake to become familiar with the middle school and all of its operations. Ms. Flamino and Mrs. Campbell have been working with guidance and Carol Tyler to finalize student schedules that meet the needs of all of our learners. So we're, we did registration days at the middle school. We've updated that term to be student open house days because I think it's been a little misleading with the term registration days. People think that they go and do registration forms there, but, so we've changed it to, we will be running student open house days on Thursday, August 26th and Friday, August 27th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Parents will receive notification via email to complete all the school forms in advance of the student open house days and that their child's schedule is available to view. Students and parents slash guardians are encouraged to walk through their schedule to gain a familiarity with the building on these days. Personnel, thanks to Tim and all of his hard work before he is going up to the high school. We are currently fully staffed at the middle school. However, we're searching for the following club advisors for this upcoming school year. Co-advisor for yearbook, co-advisor for robotics, advisor for chess club and advisor for video game club. Facility works update. The custodial staff has been hard at work this summer preparing the building for the 2022, sorry, 2021, 2022 school year. To date, the gym floor, along with most of the classrooms in the north wing of the building, have been stripped and waxed. The custodial staff has also started stripping and waxing in the south wing while the main hallway retiling is underway, as I think everybody has seen on their way in. Retiling should be completed by July 30th. Much of the furniture that needed to be stored during the past school year is making its way back into the building and classrooms. New students, we are continuing to register new to the district students throughout the summer. As of July 14th, we have had six new students register for the upcoming school year. We are continuing with extended school year, which began, it actually should be July 6th, not July 8th. The middle school is pleased to be hosting students pre-K through grade eight from Hollis and Brookline this summer. We have 12 Hollis pre-K and kindergarten students on Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, as well as 13 Brookline pre-K and kindergarten students on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. So Tuesdays and Wednesdays, to say the least, are very busy with a population of students that we don't usually get to see. But it's been fun and, yeah, that group is a, is a fun group, busy group. The middle school has 34 grade seven and grade eight students enrolled in ESY this summer. Students are working on reading, math and other related services during the five weeks that ESY are being offered, is being offered. NECK has also continued its running all summer. I believe there's two students in the NECK program this summer. As Tim mentioned, we are doing a summer academy. We're hosting a math summer academy to support learning loss due to the pandemic. There are currently 10 students participating in the summer academy. We did host the robotics summer camp that Tim mentioned that's being put on by the high school. There's nine campers, six of which are SAU students. This was a write-up that I received from the camp director.
And we can, you can highlight it, we can read.
Yeah, I figured you guys could, so it was a great week. The nine campers, it was great to have students back in the building, some students that have not been in the building stopping through. I got to have my first 3D printed object, which was really neat. I'd never seen a 3D printer prior to being here, so it's really great to see all those things happening. And as Tim mentioned, I think over the last year, two years, the middle school robotics program's kinda taken a hit due to the pandemic. So I think this is gonna help get it going again at the middle school and just see students excited about it. The high school students that were involved were talking above my knowledge of robotics and the things that they do. So I have a lot to learn when it comes to robotics. But it was a great camp and something that I hope continues next year. And I hope the robotics club continues on for the whole school year.
Where are the voices coming from? I'm sorry.
The hall.
Are they outside?
They're right outside the doors.
They're right there.
We can close that door.
I think we can just close the door.
I'm sorry, it's making me back up crazy.
It's just, it's a problem in this room.
It's just the acoustics in this room, all I'm hearing are the.
Tim, before you run away.
Yep, sure.
Where are we going?
Can Patrick finish?
I thought he did.
I did, I was gonna do my handbook real quick.
Just remind me, yep. When Patrick talked about the camp, he, in this thing, he has a number of students. Can you just give an idea, approximate number of students that are in the summer program for the high school?
The summer academy?
The one that's making, that's specifically intended to make up for losses?
The summer academy, I don't have those exact numbers, Tom, but I consider to get them. You have them right?
Yep. So we have sort of credit recovery options. And then for both English and math, English is purely credit recovery. And we have a total of 11 students, some of which have already completed the credit recovery. And so now we're down to five or six. For math, we have both credit recovery and also just skill-based recovery, if you will, to kind of boost their performance into the next year. And that one, I believe, is 12 students participating.
I want to thank, thank both of you for highlighting and running those programs because that's, first of all, I think it's pretty amazing that the number is so small. But second of all, that we're providing this service because it's so critical with what we got going on.
Yeah, we are offering something K to 12.
Great, good, no, Gina, all right, Patrick, go ahead, you can go on to your student handbook changes.
Sure. So the first seven or so are just small updates. The first one being just the first page. Those marks in red are the highlights. So if you go through the handbook itself, we highlighted those in red so that you, they pop right out to you. Updated the link on the front page, updated table of contents, updated the school calendar to reflect this year, updated the daily bell schedule, updated report card dates, updated the language around cell phone policy, just for the middle school, so we'll read that language.
Curious what it is.
Yeah, I am too.
What page is that on?
That is page 12. So students may bring cell phones to school, but the phone must be secured in their locker for the day. However, a classroom teacher reserves the right to use self-use phones in class for educational purposes. Should a cell phone be in a student's possession during the school day, the student may be asked to bring their cell phone to the main office and leave it there for the day. If a student continues to have their phone out during the school day, the student may be asked to leave their phone in the main office during the school day for an extended period of time. Parents may be notified and expected to pick up the phone from the school. The language prior was the student will be asked. So we just changed that to be a little more flexible for some situations. And students' cell phones are coming to the building a little more frequently after this last year.
I was wondering if we could use a more forceful verb like instructed. Ask means like do me a favor versus you will do this. Are we allowed to require it, Andy?
I think the concern about cell phones is when they go from somebody's possession to somebody else to watch them, it creates potential issues as well. I think the middle school is, what I'll say, tightening up. But I think overall, they've done a very good job with cell phones, I think. So I struggle with making it, what I'll say, black and white because then it makes it black and white for an administrator and the teacher. I'd like to give them the flexibility, knowing full well that our administration during Tim's tenure, which will continue to happen, is addressing the issues as they come up.
But the way it's worded now, if it's a request and the request is refused, do we have recourse?
Yeah, because you failed to respect an administrator's request and just go into a different track.
Okay.
Which is actually a much more black and white track. You know, meaning it's less gray than a phone. So most kids start to realize, I don't want to refuse an administrator's request.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that gray area?
I am, yeah. Having a lot of experience from a previous district in running into situations where students have been asked to give their cell phone up and then made the accusation that a teacher broke their phone. Just kind of gives us a little bit more flexibility to work with a student. Page 13, I believe this was language that was developed last year by a committee in the district about virtual classroom expectations. So we put that language in the handbook for this year. Page 15, updated that section. As teachers will not be required to provide an optional snack time because the schedule has been updated and doesn't require students or teachers to give that optional snack time in the mid-morning. I think snack in the normal school year, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, is open until nine, 10?
You mean the actual snacks that we sell? Yeah, I think it was 9:30, something like that. The official snack time that was designated, it kind of went away to a less official. Kids are allowed to eat, make, eat some breakfast.
So are you back to snack time?
No.
And then 16, included health snack section for parties, celebrations and curriculum-related food items in schools. I just made notes that you guys all recommended to Tim and we'll be updating that. And I'll work with Tim to make sure.
They'll probably look pretty similar.
Yes.
But they will.
Yes.
And then. Is there an expectation that there, in the upcoming year, there will be virtual classes in the middle school? I don't mean categorically, I mean, are there, have we done something that is bringing that option into the school?
We added the language to give us the flexibility because we do see this as a resource from the pandemic that could assist us in a wide variety of situations.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's become a reality yet.
I think we're gonna get there and I think, you know, some of that may be some of the ways we have to address some of the reopening plans for select individuals.
Sorry.
Oh, you're.
No worries. I'm not reading as fast as you are.
And then the last one was just updated the concussions and head injuries policy, JL CJ, and put that language into the handbook. Some of the policies that were referenced, same as Tim, they do say pending JLF and JICD. And as those get updated, we will update the handbook.
Is it normal practice to actually re-quote the policies in the handbook?
Some of them are required by law to be actually distributed to all families annually.
Oh, so that, so that the.
So this is our method.
So that they sign off on it.
Okay.
I just always hate when you have to update multiple documents.
Yep, agreed.
So just in terms of the timeline, this is what will be posted and sent out to families for the August date. But we're, like, if we have comments or whatever, we'll have a meeting before then, right? And this is going out electronically? Right, and this is going out electronically, so.
This is going out electronically to all families, June, July 30th.
Okay, so we won't have it, so this is it? Okay, just checking. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, is the, the open house dates, are those for the school days or that's before school?
Those are before school.
What happens if someone isn't available for either of those two days? Who?
The parent or staff member?
Kids, kids.
Kid, kid, parent, you know, that they can't do the registration then?
Yeah, we, yeah, we would work with them and either myself, Yolanda Flamino, Jen Campbell. Somebody would be open to scheduling a different date.
Can the information of what that method is be distributed along with the document? Or along with the invitation or notification?
Yep, yep, we'll be certain to put in language that says if you can't make these dates, please contact us and we'll set something up.
I'll be happy to take Brian's. We have a wealth of things going on in athletics. He's doing a number of hires, many of those are already in process. We are gearing up for the fall and he just continues to do yeoman's work with the summer programming. He's organized with Mike in the weight room, all of those things. He regularly communicates with the. He regularly communicates with the boosters and I'm really excited, uh, excited for this year and to kind of get back to some level of normalcy.
Any update on the, uh, turf field, uh, has, has any changes since last meeting?
Uh, bleachers are completed. The work crew still has to come back and do the press box.
That's right, yep.
And the, um, and then the handicap ramp. And it's just more, the, the two factors that enter into it, uh, securing the final drawings, which are done, but they're just getting in here and then getting, um, the work crew back.
Any further investigation into proposed rental rates?
Uh, we, we continue to dialogue, we have, um, an HP Elevates meeting this Thursday. I'm sure, uh, that's gonna be raised by the chair.
Raised to me, yeah.
Yep. So, uh, we're, we're moving in that direction and again, Brian really kind of feels that, uh, the rates that we discussed are kind of appropriate to start, um, and move forward from there because there is so much more accessibility to a turf field that you want to be competitive if you actually are trying to generate some revenue. The, the other thing, just so the board is aware, um, with the HP Elevates, Tom and I had a little discussion and Tom brought it to the board and I know it's gonna come up again, it's just around, uh, potentially advertisement, uh, at the fields as a revenue generation. So, you'll probably be something, seeing something come back to the board, uh, to get your thoughts regarding, uh, which would probably be policy.
Thank you, Patrick. Are there any other questions for Patrick or Tim?
I think we have some.
Are we good?
Hmm?
I think we have some.
So, um, Patrick and Tim, thank you so much for your contributions today and for listening to, um, the public input, which I think is really informative for all of us and for taking time to listen to our response to that because I also think that's informative, but now you can go home. You're welcome to stay, but you can definitely go home.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then, would the chair want to consider, um, maybe table a deliberation in the policy?
Yes.
Since we've got a full board, I would, I would hate for that Cindy and Katie, uh, to, to miss out on the policy.
Right, yeah, so, um, can we just do that? Do we need a motion?
Uh, would you, would you put a motion?
We need a motion just to table all three of them.
So, I think what we, I think we should probably do that and, um, move, move on with this discussion. So, can we make a motion to, do we have to do them each and, one at a time?
Do them as a slate.
So, Ken, you wanna make that motion?
Thank you, sir.
We move to table, uh.
Deliberation.
Deliberations on policy JLF, policy JLDVA and policy EVBD until our, I guess, uh, we don't even need to say until, we just, I wish, I've moved to table it.
Okay.
Okay.
And is there any, I don't think you talked about tabling, right? I don't know. Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. Okay, so then we just need the, um, mask lawsuit update from you?
Yep, uh, I had put the, um, results of the lawsuit that was issued to us, um, on the decision regarding masks. The board had asked, uh, for an update from legal costs. I, I simply don't have that yet. Jim was away for a vacation and he's gonna try to get that to me for the August meeting. It's something we're working on, um, but we also have, at the board chair's request, posted that on the SAU and the co-op websites for the community to, um, review.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now we have articles of agreement, a potential fall meeting date, that's next on our discussion. I don't have that as a deliberative item. Okay, so go ahead, that would be under the committee of Tom and Liz.
Yeah, and Beth.
Yeah, thanks.
And Beth, but she's not here, so she loses out.
Did, uh, do you have a chance to look at what was included? It's just the article as Jim had drafted?
Yeah.
And then?
Just a little comment.
The, then the, the other part is the PowerPoint presentation, which would be the slides and, and my question to you is, do you think that as a freestanding document, not the, um, the first one, but the second one that has the red.
Yeah.
Yeah, Thomas, do you think that is understandable as, as written? So that if we advertise the meeting and posted, posted that this is, this is what's going to be proposed, that it would be, um, sufficient for informing the public of the content of the meeting? Because the, the, the process that we've described and that we would like to pursue involves a, um, in-person slash electronic, um.
Information session.
Information session. And then there would be a formal hearing, uh, the date I propose for that would be at our September board meeting, which is September 15th. Drew would, is available to participate with that. Followed up, and I'm, I've got a question out to Jim. Drew and, Drew thinks that it's not, um, in the seven to 25-day range, hearing, hearing to, um, to actual special meeting. So, if the meeting was on the 15th, sometime within 25 days of that, we would have an actual district meeting-style meeting to vote on the proposal. So, the first thing would probably happen in, you, we can decide late August to early September, which is just information, then. Like for, huh?
Like a forum?
No, it'd be more like what was done in the beginning where you, because we don't want it to, to, um, supersede or, or be viewed as a duplicate to the, to the hearing. Hearing is where we get input back from the public. So, it would be our opportunity to present it and, um, that then gives the public an opportunity to digest it and come to the hearing and, and ask questions or they could ask questions, you know, we might give them a vehicle.
But the hearing's public input, so is there an opportunity for questions and answers in a process?
Yeah, simple questions, questions, quest, about questions of clarification as opposed to questions of, or, or debate of the topic.
Right, so, wouldn't it be wise to have an information session that's two-way? That allows people to ask questions in a forum?
My understanding, I, I thought the way that we, that, that, well, what, what was said, I'm not objecting to it, but what was said at the last time we talked about it is people didn't want to have a discussion that would essentially, um, take away from the value of the hearing.
I don't remember saying, did you say that?
Well, I think to, to Tom's point, there's gotta be a way for the information just to be presented.
Right.
I see that in-person or Zoom allowing for clarification. But I really think from the standpoint of the, I'll say, the debate about the articles, that should be at the public hearing, which we intend to have at the board meeting. And then 25 days from there would be the official larger meeting for people to vote. I think the documents that are provided, Tom, um, with Jim crafting some sort of like introductory paragraph would meet the requirements because we'd have to post all this.
It'd be effectively like a warrant article.
Right.
Okay.
But each of the pages would be to be posted in the paper, so everybody has that legal piece. And then I'd also recommend that for August, September, they just, in our board packet so that people can't say they didn't have knowledge. And, and I'm not saying we need to discuss it every month, but, you know, we could do the reminder in the board packet. It's the information, we're planning this informational meeting on this night, we're having a public hearing on this night, the information is being published in the newspaper. Because I think that, to me, would address maybe Mr. Gruber's concerns about the number of public that show. But I think the pieces, I do think they should be separate because I think adding this to a, a annual meeting, a traditional annual meeting would be a, a lot of information.
Yeah, I do agree with the public input that it's probably not gonna bring a lot of people out. It's not a topic that tons of people are gonna wanna vote on and that is the concern about having a special meeting. However, I just don't see this as a warrant article on a, in our, at our district meeting. So, I think the best way to do it is what you've laid out.
Yeah.
Create a PowerPoint, post it, however many days it's supposed to be posted before the hearing.
Though, the, the, that thing, that, that's not a requirement, that's something we're just choosing to do.
Okay, so then you just do it, you just do it. If you don't feel like you need to have clarification, if you put on there simply an email address for the, like, I mean, they can find the email address, but just with any questions?
Oh, see, I was, I was thinking of sending it out.
Okay.
At a later date, having, having a, just, a, a hearing because people said they, they wanted, people here said they wanted the public to get.
The information.
Get it presented to them. Um, if, if, if we're just, if people are comfortable with just sending it out and then going straight to the hearing, I'm, I'm fine with that.
What do you wanna do, Tom?
As little as possible. No, I'm serious.
I, I kinda think send the information out and just doing the public hearing. I think doing it on a digital forum.
Sounds great.
Uh, uh, you know, i- if for some reason we have that hearing and there turns out to be 500 people in the audience and it becomes super controversial, we can have a public forum after that between, you know, we have 20-some days.
Right, sounds good.
We can do that.
Sounds great.
We can have that extra meeting if we need to.
So, I think the plan is great and I thought the document was clear and understandable.
Okay, the, the next question is, are you okay with, with having the hearing at our September meeting?
I am, I think that's a great plan.
Okay, so the only thing we need to pick is a, is a, a date for the actual meeting and Drew and his, um, his staff are not readily available the week of the 20th of August, which is.
September, you mean?
Uh, September.
We have to have it for September.
Okay.
Can we throw out some dates and kind of get Drew's, get a, get a feel of it via email and then vote on that?
We think in an evening meeting or?
Wouldn't we have to vote on it in the, in this August meeting anyway?
That's what I assume, we're just confirming.
Can we do some circling back on this via email, but vote on it in August?
That's my question, if, if that's the case, then it means that the information can't get sent out any earlier than after that meeting. Is that?
Yeah, but I think that's plenty of time, that's like a month.
I just, are people comfortable with that?
The other thing is knowing, like, what Patrick's gonna have, probably the entire administrative population at his registration, uh, we can make copies available, we can do a number of things. I think one of the things we're trying to do is get the information out. So, we could do an email with a link that would go to all.
But as long as, i- is after, is doing that work after the August meeting, okay?
Yeah, I think so.
Then let's plan on setting the, having, we know the hearing's gonna be on September 15th and we'll pick a, a beating date at our August meeting.
I just think it's gonna be too hard to pick one now, so.
I agree.
Okay, great, that sounds like a great plan, woo, woo. Okay, social and emotional learning update.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment, um, you know, at, at the end of the year, focusing in on some social and emotional pieces with our students, uh, we do anticipate, um, this opening being kind of like a new experience for everybody. A lot of kids have been out of school for a while, some haven't seen their friends, um, some of our teachers haven't moved back even though we, you know, we're returning pretty much relatively normal. So, at our administrative retreat, we're gonna be stressing with our, our staff, the administration, to really get out to their guidance counselors, you know, try to get a pulse on things early as kids try to adjust back because our, our high school schedule's gonna go back and we do plan to go back to lockers and lunches and everything like that. So, there is gonna be an adjustment and we're not sure if that's gonna be just a minor, you know, kids are resilient or that's gonna be a culture shock. And it may vary from approach to approach, but we wanna make sure that our, you know, our guidance staff, our administration is ready for those type of issues early in the year as we transition back. So, um, you know, the work we've done over the last couple of years, we're really hoping pays off in our classrooms. We're gonna ask teachers to do a little more of that, um, you know, whether it be in rock or, um, you know, a discussion in cat block, just kind of getting out there and really seeing where the kids are. I've talked to Brian a little bit about, you know, I want our coaches to be aware of it. Some of our middle schools haven't, who've done, uh, activities, they've headed to bureaus. So, it's just, it's just more updating the board, we're in families, because a lot of families have asked me about that. Uh, we're well aware that this is gonna be a difficult transition potentially for some students and we'll be prepared.
Can I just add that we've, um, utilized federal funding to increase, um, school counseling? Just to further reduce numbers and, and increase that contact with the eventual students.
Yep. Can you just remind me, do we, are we offering any option for continued remote learning?
We are not unless it's a, a specific, uh, student.
But I mean, it's not something to say, I, I wanna, I wanna continue to stay at home?
No.
Okay.
Gina, did we add head count to the counseling office that?
No, we just made everyone a 1.0.
Got it.
Yep.
Um, just to follow up on that though, part of what I'm, would like to see, and I know you guys are super busy, but we had a social and emotional learning committee report, kind of you and Bob presented this great, you know, all your, the information that you had gathered right before the pandemic, pretty much. And so, I know the next step was social and emotional learning committees at the building level?
Those did.
I assume they started?
Yep.
But are they able to be back in practice at some point and continue to do that work? Or, it's been tricky?
It has been tricky, I would say that they are still in full force in half of our buildings. Some of it is due to a change in the, the principal.
Right.
But, but they are there, present in, in half of them and they, um, are sort of the groups that have pushed, you know, some of those programs that we brought in to the middle school at the end of the year and our high school, the adventure lore activity that students were able to participate in. So, so definitely they are, they are, we, they're just not as formalized with, with quarterly meetings as an SAU.
So, I just wanna make a comment and I know there's no public here to hear this, but that's really important work that you guys need to do and it's really hard to do that work when you spend a lot of time on compiling documents for write-to-know requests. So, um, I know no one's here and I'm sure not a lot of people are listening, but that's the work that we really want you to be able to do and we know that's the work we want, we, that you wanna be doing. And, um, so it's a shame that we're spending so much time on things that are distracting from the work of actually helping our students, so. And that's not just you, it's all of our staff as well, so. And, to be honest, the next piece is kind of impacted, I'm sure, by that too, but I know you've worked really hard on instructional review process based on COVID, so.
Sure, so, I believe I spoke to this a little bit earlier where I had requested that all of our teachers report out on, um, just differences, if you will, that they've seen in their cohorts this year versus last year. So, whether it was something, um, we didn't get to something, that really wasn't the case, but let's say that was, that, that could've been an option or just in general, this particular cohort seemed to struggle, um, with the speaking component in terms of the, um, ELA standards. So, that information was gathered by our building administrators and analyzed, reviewed. That information also gave us our, um, invite list for our summer learning academies, K to 12. And, um, but in terms of the just more generalized, um, comments on, you know, what was learned, what was, you know, found difficult. And so now, uh, Ms. Flaminow and Mrs. Zeller are going through that and determining, coming up with ideas for how to spiral that into the next course. And they're compiling the list and then giving them directly to those receiving teachers. So, those receiving teachers, um, won't in October say, gee, they seem to be struggling in this area. Before the, the kids arrive, they're gonna be tasked in their PLCs with developing a concrete plan on how they're spiraling that in and it doesn't mean do that lesson and cram it in. It means how are they gonna integrate in a way that, um, flows appropriately and really solidifies that knowledge, but just in a different year that was originally, you know, intended? Or if a topic was supposed to be spiraled and it, we didn't start to spiral last year, know that we need a, um, an intro lesson to get that going. So, I'm really excited that, you know, that we'll have, teachers will have a roadmap for what to do with their students and have a really good idea as to what they're coming in with in terms of skills.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that? Sounds like that's been complicated and hard, but thank you for doing that. Draft reopening of school plan for 2021, I feel like you've touched on this?
Sure, so, we brought forward in our last month the reopening plan that we submitted to the state. Since then, we've been receiving additional guidance from CDC today. Superintendent Corey and I and Director of Student Services, DeGeneres, were on a call with DHHS and, um, learned some new things. And tomorrow morning, Lauren will be meeting with all of our school nurses to, to reflect on the guidance that was received from the state and. the guidance that was received from the state and, you know, to see if we need to make any changes to our original plans. So we have drafted our lengthy reopening plan, but it's still in draft form. We wanted to make sure we received any updated, if any, guidance from the state and then made sure that we had the plan that made most sense for our community, given our transmission rates and, you know, the concerns that we have, so...
Just to elaborate on that a little bit, I think most people saw CDC came out with a mask statement. One of the things they talked about was if you were vaccinated, you wouldn't have to wear a mask. If you were unvaccinated, you should wear a mask. People should know that's not legal in New Hampshire. It's against the law.
Yeah, I saw that today.
So we can't do that, and we won't, we weren't going to do that anyways. On the other side, I think...
And you can't ask. You can't even ask if it's...
You shouldn't be even asking. I mean, that's, that's the big thing. Somebody's medical information is their medical information. But I just wanted to make you aware of that because we may get questions and it does violate the law. The American Pediatricians Association came out with their standard. Pretty much last year, RSAU kind of followed the Department of Health and Human Services and Dr. Chan. Dr. Chan came out today, and in his call, basically said that you needed to look at all the issues based on transmission in your district. So, you know, CDC is looking at the nation in cases that differ. Right now, we have very few cases across New Hampshire. So we're going to be looking at the masks. We are, right now, this summer, masks are optional. We haven't had any issues with COVID, not on the plastic, through the summer. And we really hope that we'll be able to come up with a plan around masks. But it's difficult because one age group hasn't had the opportunity to be vaccinated yet. So we're trying to balance all of those pieces. And we may have different recommendations for different districts based on the availability of the vaccination.
Do we have any kids under 12 in the Co-op?
I'm sure we would.
You could potentially have some for a month because the cutoff is September 30th. So we can work with probably, well, say, a limited number of families.
Well, and you'd be longer than that because you're going to not only turn 12, you've got to have enough time to have two...
Correct. Yes, I forgot that. You're right.
Yeah, that's, therein lies the, no, we were doing the math because I have one of those summer babies, not for, not in the incoming class, but I, the junior is one of those kids that doesn't turn...
Yep.
But that's, but yeah, so, but, but most of, but everyone would have had the opportunity by probably the first week in October, I would think.
Right, and we had discussed today some language that we may put in the reopening where it addresses that. You know, where we look at the back date, we say 60 days from that date, and then we would be mask optional.
Why even bring it up when we have no control over any behavior as a result of it? Why enter that successful...
What I think, we're trying to account for everything, Tom. We may ultimately bring the plan forward that just says masks are optional at the Co-op and ask the board to support it, and then approach families on a one-on-one basis because we'll have some students who may need to have masks because of their...
No, no, my point is, anything regarding the mathematics or the availability or the of vaccination.
So I think one of the arguments is making a decision for a population that is eligible, whether they want to or not, has certain implications, and then making a potential different decision for a population that is not eligible. Now, if their eligibility becomes available, the discussion is potentially this fall, there will be, the vaccine will be available to younger students. So if, let's say, we were to open the year with a mask mandate for our elementary districts, does it make sense to say, to, just given the level of fatigue with mask mandates, does it make sense to say that the mask mandate is in place six, up until 60 days after the vaccine becomes eligible and then it's optional? Because I don't...
I, no, I understand that for the elementary districts, but for the Co-op, I don't, because it's such a small portion of the population for whom it's a variable, and within that population, entire population, we have no knowledge...
Sure.
And no control over it.
So you're just saying make it up?
So students...
I'm just saying whatever you do for the, for the Co-op...
Just do the whole thing for everybody?
Don't change your assumption, don't change your plan or key your plan to whether or not the vaccination availability changes between now and then.
Yeah, we will definitely consider that point because, again, it was, the call ended at about quarter of five today, so this is fresh off the presses.
Yeah, Barrett sent the stuff out too. We had to read them.
One of the things that, on the call, I learned, school buses fall under the federal order and are considered public transportation. So masks are required on school buses under the federal guidelines, and it doesn't matter what our mask policy is for the district.
Right.
Okay? We will...
In some ways, I think that's good because I think you'll have a self-selection. Parents who don't want their kids to have been masked on the bus will take their kids to school.
Right.
And it's always an option.
You know, we will do distancing to the maximum extent possible. We're still working our way through high school and middle school lunch because obviously those are large groups, so we're going to talk with Tim and Patrick.
What's the, what is the thought process behind what was brought up here of having, allowing close proximity in, during lunch in the cafeteria but not elsewhere?
We didn't allow it last year. We used a gymnasium and the cafeteria and outside when possible. Our goal and what we're discussing is can we provide the three feet minimum that they discussed? Because the balancing act is that the kids want to be back together. If you talk to the kids, they don't want to have, you know, just two people at this size table. So we're trying to figure out, is there a way, you know, is it now four at this size table because of the three feet? You know, we'll get there. I mean, one of the things I will share, I felt after the call ended, it was, good luck, have a nice year, we'll talk to you in June.
Well, at least you'll have to do those calls then for an entire year.
I mean, it was, it was very frustrating. I haven't talked to my fellow colleagues, but we will not be doing symptom monitoring this year, so parents do not have to fill that out. There is no quarantine of entire class. It will be working with our nurses like we did the second half of the year. Nurses, again, will have the flexibility to make decisions based on what they're seeing with the child who's in their office. So there were a lot of, I'll say, greater flexibility for us, but a number of these pieces we had already done last year. So for some people on the call, they're opening really for the first time this fall. So it's kind of eye-opening. For us, it was like people trying to play catch-up.
Right. And I would just add that our reopening document that was generic was SAU 41-wide. So some of, two of our schools had lunch in the classroom at their desk and didn't go to any other location. So what we're saying is we're going to use our cafeterias again. Given every individual school and their limitations on size and whatever, we were very creative in order to open. So the idea is we're going to go back to normal. That doesn't mean we're no longer going to potentially offer multiple spaces. And I think eating outside at both the middle school and the high school was well-received by everybody.
Because they loved it.
And it doesn't have to end, you know, so...
Okay, thank you. So in August, you'll get that very lengthy document.
Again.
But again, it's basically returning to school as normal with the ability in the plan to pull back if needed or to increase things if needed. One of the things we will ask for when we approve the plan is to provide the administration the flexibility again because we don't want to make everything have to be a meeting. You know, if all of a sudden six cases happen and we want to decide to go to masks or whatever because that's what CDC or DHHS is recommending or whatever it is, it's just more that flexibility to kind of do a lot of what we did last year, which is on the fly.
And we'll do that, okay?
August, yeah.
We're done.
We are done.
Okay, wait one second. I do, what?
Are we going to have any outside spaces? Are we going to get any tents back so we have some outside...
We are not getting the tents again because most often the tents were not actually used, but we are strongly encouraging classes to go outside and get the fresh air. I mean, that was just such a positive experience at K-12 that we want to, you know, continue that.
So I just want to answer a question that was raised. Policy IV, which is our academic freedom policy, has been, the current policy that we currently have, has been submitted, right, to our attorney for review? And that is an ongoing process, so, and it will be on the policy committee agenda. Next one.
Can I, before you adjourn, I want to say something?
I do want to just say that I should talk about HB highlights, so woo-hoo, HB. There we go. And I need to report out from the process observer. Do you want to speak before you report?
Gina, Gina sent around the minutes from the non-public, and it came in two documents, so I forgot that we, we did get them. They're very simple. It's literally a 15-second read, if you want to look at it. Maybe we can vote on that, on approving them. We won't have to deal with them next time.
Can we just put them on next time? That would be great. I'd like to. I don't, I can't get to them. Can we just do them next time, please? It's easy enough. Thank you. Report out by process observer.
Well, we're really close to journeying exactly on time simply because we moved all the discussion of the policy to a future meeting. So we're eventually going to have to take our lumps.
We swapped the time.
We definitely swapped the time. So we had allotted an hour for public input. I think it really became more like an hour and 20. I was glad to see that the public input went a lot more smoothly than I thought it was going to based upon the opening comments. I think it's good that allow folks to come and share their thoughts on these issues. And I thought that overall, the public had the right tone and respect for the process. And I think working on that is going to take some time. And I'm going to let you all go because I think that's the most important part, is all of you, especially the administrators, are spending way too much time at late-night meetings. We did a good job.
I need a, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn by Krista. I need a second.
No, don't second it.
A second.
All in favor? Are you sure about that?
Because I'm the only person who will second the end of the meeting.